All right, CMC on. We're good to go. All right, I'd like to call the Mount Aerie Master Plan 2023-24 Joint Workshop to session. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for attending, including the Planning Commission members that are here. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our mayor, Mayor Larry Houshaw.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out to those citizens who came out to observe this workshop and then make comments toward the end of it. There's 30 minutes toward the end, starts at 9:00 PM, where we will be taking citizen comments. I want to thank the staff for showing up tonight. Appreciate all the work that you guys have done toward getting this master plan to the point that we're at today. Planning Commission Chairman Ralph, thanks for showing up and finding your way back here from doing some hurricane relief. We greatly appreciate that. And Martina, good to see you, Bill, and everyone else on the Planning Commission. Thanks so much for the work that you have put into this to this point. The council has had a couple of weeks to mull over this thing and go through there. I think it'll be a very productive workshop, a little bit of history because I was around and Heather was certainly around, most of the staff was around 10 years ago when we went through this for the 2013 master plan. It served as a very valuable component to the town. Bill had put together a spreadsheet out of that one, and many of the commissions carried that spreadsheet around and were able to keep working on components that are in the master plan to accomplish tasks throughout the town, including parks improvements, rails of trails. You know, eventually, we got a lot of infill areas, looked at, and looked at some other things, too. We also found some areas of it that were not exactly enjoyed by everybody, and it gave us a, at least we had a guideline, we had something to start with, and got citizen input. That's why it's so important tonight that we have citizens out here that are willing to watch the process and make some comments and help us as we go along. I think it'll make the next decade go a lot smoother. So again, thank you, everybody, for the hard work. Thank you, CMC, for showing up out here at the American Legion. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Council President Washabaugh. And I think you were going to look at the chairman.
So, yep, so very quickly, I will relinquish to Planning Commission Chairman, Mr. Ralph Gann, for a brief overview of how we came about the master plan.
Great. Council President Washabaugh and mayor, thank you for joining us tonight in this workshop. And I think I speak for, on behalf of the commissioners and the town planner and zoning administrator, tonight kind of rounds off the rough edges on what we've presented to you. And with your input and discussions tonight, we hope to polish it a bit further so that we have a product that does guide the town and is worthy of your adoption at your time and at your meeting. So I have been asked to provide a quick overview so that everybody kind of has a bit of basis for how we got to tonight. And so up on the screen, these three points will be touched upon by me in roughly about the next 12 minutes. Who developed this draft master plan? And another way you can say it is, who do we hold accountable for the version before us tonight? What was the process? And does that process generate a document that meets state and county requirements? And lastly, there's many elements of this plan, but I wanted to highlight some key elements, just as takeaways for what we have before us.
Hit it.
So who developed this draft master plan? Is an array of good folks over the past 15 months. The public is at the top because in every meeting that we held, we invited the public to come in with comments, suggestions, and we acted upon them, and we deliberated upon them. The town planner and zoning administrator, John Breeden, the commission and the council liaison, the names you see here, the town board and commissions, and I'll explain why they were a key stakeholder in developing the version we have tonight, including in that water and sewer, streets and roads, wreck and parks, recycling and sanitation, the Commission on Aging and Illibility, and the Economic Development Commission. Advisors are the category of making it really rich with good content, includes the town engineer, Barney Quinn, the town administrator, Heather Smith, who gave us perspectives as to how we conducted the 2013 plan 10 years ago, and the town attorney, of course, for any matters that broached upon legal questions.
Hit it.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that in the behind the scenes, as we all know within this town, there are key people that just make it happen. And so among those are those folks shown here, Rachel Goody, Julian Friedman, who works with Barney Quinn and the engineering department, Gina Galucci White, who enabled us to have a web-based display of the versions as we develop them, and also access for the public to submit comments, and the other names here, were key in making all of it come together for tonight.
Hit it.
So what's the process? The process began with all of us on the commission having a baseline of understanding of some fundamental things. First and foremost is a good knowledge of what the current master plan says, the 2013 master plan. We also had to have an understanding of the state requirements and what were the county master plans that exist for Frederick County and for Carroll County. And the state requirements are key and are found within the land use article of the state American, of Maryland. And I'll just read. The land use article states that the planning commission has the function and the duty to prepare a comprehensive plan for its jurisdiction and to present this plan to the local legislative or governing body for its consideration and adoption. The comprehensive plan must serve as a guide to public and private actions and decisions to ensure the development of public and private property in their appropriate relationships. So that's pretty profound as you're, go do this work, coming directly from the state. Lastly, key in our fundamental knowledge was to ID the key stakeholders because we can't create this just among the commissioners. We have to have the input from a variety of key stakeholders. Once we did that, we then established with the town staff's help, a web-based access to all the versions we created and an avenue for the public to submit suggestions and comments as they saw those versions unfold. We then created a workflow schedule with milestones, and we had to build in some flexibility because I remind everybody, we're volunteers, and so the whole work-life balance was at play for the past 15 months since we started on August 10th. So we had a roadmap, so to speak, with what we wanted to achieve, always aiming for getting it done this fall, okay? And then, of course, stick to it and get it done.
Hit it.
When I talk about the workflow schedule and milestones, I just want to make everyone aware, this included 29 meetings. We held 15 workshops. We held 11 PC meetings where the agenda included chapters or topics related to the draft plan. We held two Zooms. We had a public hearing, which is required at the planning commission deliberation stage. It was held on September 12th, and we collected items from those hearing comments and acted upon them, as a matter of fact. And both Martina and I, and I think other commissioners, actually did ambassador visits to other commissions to guide them on what we were looking for in the content of different chapters within our draft. So 15 months, August 10th, and if you can bring up the workflow schedule just to get an appreciation for how we did that, John?
I'll try, Ralph.
If it's too hard, we'll skip it.
All right, give me a second.
Yeah, okay. So basically, what you see here is, we structured it so there wasn't one quick look and move on. We had a minimum of two looks at every chapter from the beginning to the end. And where a chapter related to an ongoing role of our town commission, we then pitched it after our second review into the commission's hands with the invite for them to refine it further. For instance, when we got into the transportation chapter, we gave our best effort on it, but we know Streets and Roads holds better expertise in the areas of streets and roads and transportation. And so that was a stakeholder example where the partnership with other elements of the town, the commissions, we felt would certainly enrich the content to get to our first draft.
You can go back to the, get your...
Second.
There you go. Next slide.
Hit it.
So on that same question, does it meet the state and county requirements? The answer is yes. The process required by the state includes a 60-day review. Our 60-day review began on 2 May and ended at June 30th, with Frederick County, Carroll County, and the state Maryland Department of Planning providing their comments on the draft at that time. And those copies are included in your notebook with the current draft. We acted upon those comments. They were very rich. But I think it's good to show, if you hit it, from the Maryland Department of Planning...
Okay, I'm sorry.
We got this comment in their cover letter of their various department reviews, and the Maryland Department of Planning commends the city for the forward-looking draft plan. So it's good news and bad news. I guess, good news in that we at least met the mark for a good plan, and we're now a city. No, I'm just kidding.
You're in trouble.
We're in trouble. So that's an example. Frederick County and Carroll County had similar accolades for what they saw in that first chop for their 60-day review.
Next slide.
So what are the key elements of the plan? I wanted to highlight these elements, as I mentioned before. We all believe it's an actionable plan, and what I mean by that, we establish a vision at the forefront of the document on what this town should be in 10 years, in 2033. We then establish five goals, high-level goals, that describe the key elements of achieving that vision. Under those goals, we have established objectives. There are 25 objectives in this master plan. And underneath each objective, we have two things. We have assigned an objective owner, a group or a person responsible for now ensuring the objective moves forward. And to assist that person or commission in moving forward, we have also offered some tasks, things to do. And so what you have here now is, from the beginning to the end, if we complete the tasks, we achieve the objectives. If we achieve the objectives, we reach our goals. If we reach our goals, we may very well have the Mount Aerie we want to have in 10 years. It also provides a future development focus in these three areas. It focuses on continuing the infill of vacant downtown zone parcels, and that's for obvious reasons. We want to still consider the core downtown as the key to the identity of our town, the character of our town, and the vibrancy of our town. So let's continue to build out the downtown zone. We want to continue infill in all other zoning districts. The advantages there are obvious. We want to build out where commercial properties are available, can be built. That brings not only business, it brings employment. And lastly, we want to partner with property owners to redevelop stagnant or underperforming properties in the downtown zone and elsewhere. And the draft master plan identifies specific properties with regard to that element. It also proposes rezoning of selected properties. It proposes candidate properties for redevelopment, as I just mentioned, and it proposes annexations and the proposed zoning districts within those annexations. And of course, annexations are for the continued boundary growth of the town.
Next slide.
So I believe those three items are pretty important to a kind of a fundamental understanding of how we got here tonight. And so if you now ask the question, I think, deferring, of course, to the council president and the mayor...
Hit it.
If we ask ourselves, where do we go from here? I think the answer is, with the council, the mayor, and the public's input, we can make this even better. So with that, I hand back to the council president. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much for the overview. I think the amount of effort that went into this was extensive from a lot of different people, a lot of different commissions, and mostly a lot of volunteers. So thank you guys very much for all the effort that you put in. I will now go over the expectations for tonight's workshop and how the meeting will run. This will be vastly different than the way that the Beck Property Workshop was run, where you have a specific amount of time to speak. This will be more of a back-and-forth conversation. I believe that if the council has questions, they can ask. We'll give the planning commission time to answer accordingly if they wish, or if they have the answer, you know, ready to go. There will not be a quote-unquote "time limit." There will not be an order in which everybody has to speak. But I will offer, if things start to drag along, a two-minute warning to wrap up whatever thoughts that you are having. We are looking for constructive comments, not criticism, and we will be looking to come to an overall consensus as a planning commission and a council for any future edits that will be made. If we feel like we cannot come to that consensus with a basic feel of the conversation, I may ask for a roll call from the council to come to that consensus. And with that, I am going to recommend that we start with chapters four through seven as being a very in-depth, you know, pathway forward for the town. I'd like to kick off the discussion with the proposed annexations and proposed zoning within those areas, based on chapter four and the maps that are found in the back of our binders. So with that being said, I will go ahead and open the floor up to anyone that wishes to speak. Councilmember Munder?
All right, thank you. And again, I think the efforts of everyone, particularly the planning commission, have been exemplary, and just an incredible amount of work. I do want to speak to these chapters. I want to give a couple of comments because they give a frame of reference for all my comments this evening. So in the spirit of, how can we all work together to make this even better, okay? Two main comments first. We are who we are, you know? Mount Aerie, we should just focus on who we are because that's who we've been for a long time. So we are who we are. Let's not try and be somebody else. Let's be who we've always been. Who we've been, we are a bedroom community. We're a bedroom community today. We were a bedroom community 30 years ago when I moved here with my young family, and we raised our family over the last 30 years. We're a bedroom community. Bedroom communities are highly sought after. That's why people from Germantown and Rockville and Columbia and many of us moved here to be in a bedroom community. Bedroom communities, houses, you get more house for the money. Schools are typically better. There are low crime rates. You don't have as many amenities. Most of the people live out of town. They don't work in town. For example, Carroll County, 77% of the residents work out of the county. So we are a bedroom community. And after COVID, the trends are, they're becoming even more popular because people want more house, they want safety, they want property. Six out of 10 people will work from their homes, they want extra rooms to work and play around their house. That's who we are, and I think that's what my constituents have told me they want to continue to be. So that is my frame of reference, and that's going to lead to some suggestions and changes of the vision statement and some of the strategic objectives. Now, to chapter four, let me get my thoughts out here. I'll just put it right on the table. In many ways, I read this plan, and it almost reads to me like an MXD development plan. And pertaining to the zonings, the future of the Harrison-Lashir property, everyone has that on their radar. In the plan, it says, you've taken great care to respect the views of the citizens, the 2020 community survey, the public charrettes, all the public hearings, everything we went through over the last two and a half years on MXD, Green Tree, Beck. And I don't know how, if we're truly learning from all of that, I don't know how we're proposing to zone almost a third of Harrison-Lashir, potentially, as MXD after everything we've put the town through over the last two and a half years. It's not what people want. So I will tell you, there are some sections in this plan. I'm the kind of person that rolls up my sleeves and helps. I'll be happy to help work on this. I'll be happy to write sections if you want me to, but I know this, there are some things in this plan that if I don't see them change, I'm not going to be able to support it because my constituents don't want what's in some of this plan. So for me, MXD on the Harrison-Lashir property, after everything we've gone through, and until we get lessons learned and do a lessons-learned assessment about how to make it better, I'm not prepared to zone anything else MXD in this town. So I think I'll just leave it there because I don't want Tim to give me the hook this early, so I'm sorry. I have a lot more to say. I have a lot of constructive suggestions to make, but I think I'm reflecting what my constituents would say. And you guys are all in the bubble, you're very close to it. I'm a little farther back, although I did come to almost every planning commission meeting, master plan working session, but when I read the objectives and a lot of the content, it's an MXD development plan. That's what I see in the words. And the words we use are very important because people will latch on to those words and get out of it what they want. Last very quick example of that. Think about how we got to MXD. In the 2013 master plan, there was this little sentence that said something like, "We think that MXD may be a good viable zoning for these two properties." We didn't even have an MXD ordinance. We didn't even know what that would be. But because of that wording and that hook, that's the tagline that was used to be able to legislatively zone the Beck property through the town council because it didn't go through the formal master planning process. And that's the sentence that our town attorney, and he was just doing what his job is, which is to support people's objectives. That's what got us to where we are. So words are important, and how we say some things in this plan are going to be important, and we need to pay attention to that. And thank you for the time.
If you mind if I jump in for a minute?
Sure.
I just have a question. First of all, I think that if we start with a consensus or maybe work toward question number one, should Harrison-Lashir be annexed or put in as a future annexation area or not? Can we at least have consensus on that? Is Harrison-Lashir something we want in our future annexation plan? My answer is yes. We do want to keep it in there as a potential annexation area, but I'd like to know that that's a consensus before we start beating up on how it is zoned.
Okay. Well, I was going to, no, my consensus is yes, it should remain in the annexation. I reviewed the document a little bit differently. I have like specific lines and little words that I want to change. So I was going to start with that, council president, and then move on if, and I mean, I can jump around and stop where I want because like, I have comments on the, you know, the annexation stuff, and I can wait till we decide to discuss that because I don't want to, so I can hop around.
Let's just see if we have a consensus for Harrison-Lashir first, since the mayor asked, and then we'll come back to that.
And then I'll, yeah, so then we can vote or whatever, say the consensus, and then I'll start speaking on all my little changes and stuff.
Sounds good. So we have the mayor and council member Munder, councilman Rivas.
I agree, it should be, you know, it should be part of the annexation plan, but I also agree that we should be able to control what it is and not county district commissioners that aren't in our district. So that's a big point of mine is, you know, if we do annex it in, it's in our town, we should be able to control the zoning of it and have a consensus on the correct zoning for that property.
Council Secretary Galoni, any thoughts?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with the mayor and everybody because, as we know from the past, if we don't annex it, we don't control it. So if we do not annex it in, we're having no control with what Carroll County does with it. And we know that they have in their master plan is a growth area in this part of their county. So I agree with the mayor and everybody else that we need to annex that in.
Okay. So we already have a consensus, but I will give my thoughts that I think we need to leave it in as an option for an annex. I don't see a benefit in pulling it, but that does not mean that just because it's in the master plan, as it already has been for 10 years, that it's going to be annexed unless it's done the correct way. So I think the consensus overall is to leave Harrison-Lashir in, and we'll have the discussion. So what I would maybe ask is, looking at the property, it is split-zoned or spot-zoned.
Hold on, let me, go ahead, let me just catch up.
I'm looking at the designated comprehensive land use map. Yes, sir. What was the purpose, I guess, in the spot zone? Or, and why the areas that you chose to spot-zone, did you choose those specific zoning?
That's a great question. And let me begin by, first, the commission looked at what the 2013 proposed zoning was for that particular property, and it was OPE, Office Park Employment. We stayed with that to carry it into this master plan until we had a public hearing on September 12th, where residents along Jack's Court and Butler Road made very good arguments as to their concern as to what could happen within the OPE-allowed activities within our charter, what could end up in their backyards, what could end up as their neighbors. And so as an example of where we really did listen to the input, and these are non-town residents, these are county residents, but of course, they're key to this particular parcel. So with John Breeden's lead and the rest of the commissioners, we convened with, are there better ideas based upon that input than just carrying over the old thinking? And so a few of us walked the parcel, and we looked at it carefully, and we realized that the split zoning into three zoning districts actually carried more wisdom. In the upper-right corner, or I should say, the northeastern corner, it's primarily wetlands. It's well-suited to be conservation, okay? The advantages of that particular part of the three-part zoning is that it does gain us some groundwater recharge if it were to come within our, in our boundaries, keeping in mind that that particular parcel has four relatively proven wells from our previous engagement with the county on that. So there's a great water benefit in annexing it, and there's also a water recharge opportunity that we could build in with making that section conservation. For the residents in Butler Road and Jack's Court, in consideration of their concerns, we decided to go with low-density residential as their neighbors, okay? And so that's in fairness to kind of what's already there, we don't want to destroy or harm their neighborhood feel, so low-density residential made sense for those areas. And then the balance of that plot was recommended as MXD. Why? Well, we wanted to have a mix of residential for that remaining balance so that we would have affordable housing as being pushed by the state, as being pushed by the county, but we also felt like putting commercial areas at that location on the northern edge of the town would be far enough away from your historic district commercial nodes or your more southern commercial nodes, Ridgeville Boulevard, Ridgeway, et cetera, so that commercial enterprises developed as an MXD zone in that parcel wouldn't harm those businesses. enterprises developed as an MXD zone in that parcel wouldn't harm those businesses, wouldn't encroach, wouldn't compete. So it's that rationale really that we felt like the three areas, instead of just a blanket OPE, we felt like examination and consideration of the residents, we could come up with those three areas that made better sense than just, let's do it like we did 10 years ago. Now, as the comments made about MXD, I think a rich discussion would be, can we just do residential and then do community commercial? If you agree that we can come off of 27 at that area and then have some more commercial opportunities, certainly I think that's possible, you know, to discuss. Community commercial, limited commercial, other zoning than MXD is what I'm getting at. Or if you don't agree with the fact that, you know, more commercial on the northern end of town, if we were to annex it, more commercial that would benefit the residents of, say, Sterling Glen, Summit Ridge on that side of town, if that's unnecessary in your view, then we can discuss possibly, in addition to the low-density residential, that balance being purely of some, you know, R3, R7, whatever would make sense, and no commercial. So I kind of think that's the background for how we got to the three pieces. That's the background for where we think some commercial opportunity could be built in, and then some alternatives if the commercial is unappealing altogether.
Any questions follow up?
Thank you, Chair. But I mean, while I overall agree with the mixed use or the mixed zoning of it, I just have some suggestions on, as you said, altering maybe the MXD to put that, what's zoned as MXD here, put that back to OPE because MXD, as you indicated, does allow mixed residential. And from going through the mixed residential, it's the, I think people get heartburn with MXD up there due to the type of residential that could be allowed under it and the higher density. So like OPE in the mixed-use area, conservation's fine because that's where the original annexation indicated a park as and everything else, and that can be used as a parkland there. For the low-density residential, I'm presuming you're saying like an R2 or something for that?
Yes.
Yes, somewhere around there.
Right.
I would like to know what's your thoughts, or is it possible to change that to a medium-density residential, not anything higher than an R3 classification? Because if I'm understanding it, the R3 classification, you can get some more lots up in there, which would help with affordability and some duplexes. Those are the only two allowed housing types, I believe, under R3. So that still maintains, you know, the single-family home atmosphere up against Jack's Courts and Butler Road, or even when, if an R3 medium-density residential is applied to that, make sure that the lot sizes under that classification are, that are the larger lot sizes back up to, back up to the existing residential homes in there. So you can get the same feel, like a half an acre on Butler Road backs up to like a half an acre into it, and same and same. So it's just like a continuation of what's there. But this kind of meets what I was calling 10 years ago, a mixed-use residential, and that's not really a application or a mirror. I think that's what I was told it was be called. So I mean, that's my thoughts or suggestions on Harrison-Lashir right now.
No, I, I'm totally open. I think, and again, my fellow commissioners, I don't want to hog the mic here. I would make a comment about the density if we do go strictly residential, and that is, as many of you know, I'm sure all of you know, there's high tension power lines and towers, you know, running through this property. And so when we talk about residential density, I think it's fair to say there were a number of opinions expressed on the commission as to, we got to be careful about making it too dense in there.
Oh, yeah.
Especially where it comes near the right of way of that tower. You know, for obvious reasons, people don't like large cluster, you know what I'm saying? So the, you know, the lower-density residential, in consideration of those towers, you know, in consideration of the neighbors in Jack's Court and Butler Road, the wetlands, the park, I think we could come up with a split zoning idea that takes advantage of right-size density, considering the power lines, and considering that we're going to try to build a park in that conservation area in that upper northeast corner. I think that could be a good community.
And sorry, I just thought that since we're switching around, hopping around. One other thing on what I would like to see put in one of these maps for Harrison-Lashir, something indicating that this could be, I'm not sure where the OPE is or some of the low-density residential conservation, an area where there would be, I want to say, if it came into annex, like a government use area. When I say government use, I can't think of the right term, but for a potential senior center or library or a potential school site eventually if Par's or Mount Airy Elementary needs to be replaced. Because this is the last chunk of large land. We know the senior center can't be expanded upon, or something's going to have to give it to senior center. Either the library's got to go, or they have to find a new thing, or say move, whatever. But it's like, it's good to, in the long run, to have a set spot on a map indicating what I say, government use purposes.
Right.
So that's the only other thing I could, we could work together on and work into that something, maybe 20 acres, and somewhere in there indicating that use or whatever the county would deem necessary. But just make it on there saying, we prefer, if we need a new senior center or something or a library to go in this area, particularly since the county already owns the land.
Right. So I'm glad to hear you say OPE. I feel like everybody's forgotten about that with the whole MXD. It's still a thing. So would you be okay if we did that in the OPE, like we just said, okay, this section here and keep it out of the, like, all of the rest of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because this was, we were really struggling with what to do and listened to everybody. And I'm sure you guys have all heard about HB 538 and the pressure that that puts on everything, starting January 1st. And so I'm glad you brought up OPE.
And that's why I said kind of under the low-density, put it like a medium-density R3 because that might help with affordability and the state looking at us as being a little bit more affordable community.
Yeah.
If I may enlarge kind of the think, the grander thinking of this particular parcel because we've had really good discussions, including the Economic Development Commission and a variety of folks. And I have to commend Co-Chair Hadley with regard to engaging the people that are in the know on this particular point. And the point is, because of the demographics of our town and the aging community, we created a commission to address it. It's real. We also have the real fact that our adjoining counties are basically forcing what medical services exist in those adjacent counties to capacity just within their own counties. Frederick Memorial Hospital, Howard County General, I can go on and on. The growth within those counties is going to pretty much make those facilities and services reach their capacity, never mind Mount Airy trying to get to them and use them. And so the point being here with all that lead up is, OPE is compatible with the thinking that we can possibly attract medical services into that tract also. And I won't go so far as to say a hospital because we have learned, you might as well, you know, squeeze, squeeze blood from a stone to get the state to approve a hospital, but it can be done. It does require large corporation partnerships.
And money.
To do that. But in the sense of maybe something below the threshold of the state governance, and that is, medical services, same-day surgery centers, we believe there's interest in that, and it would serve our older citizens.
And we could technically get a one-bed, like ambulatory care. It could, you know, that would qualify to, because it goes down to a certificate of need, which is, you know, expensive, long process. We may not even get it. So what we can get without that is a lot that we could bring to the community.
Carl, you may remember back in 2012, 2013, as we were rolling this out, there was a lot of discussion about the need, the value of local medical facilities for Mount Airy. There was even discussion about possible locations for it. And we didn't, we didn't take that step, but if anything, our numbers have grown, you know, the need is even greater than it was then.
I'm getting to explore. I mean, I'm just saying, I don't want to short us in anything, but I don't want to like overdevelop, as I said, town. Some of the, as Councilmember DeMoto said, some of the survey was like, no, not a lot of overdevelopment, not a lot of this and that, but a senior, like hospital or surgical center, some of that is, it is a need that's coming or is not sooner, probably sooner rather than later.
Well, one of our inputs from Cole was the senior population grew from 15 to 35%. And so it's going to continue to grow, so we thought we would bring more options.
And along with that is the fact, the challenge that's presented, that roughly half of Mount Airy is in one county and half is in another. And so that makes the coordination of transportation. And depending upon which county the senior citizen lives in and where, which county their doctors are in, it may or may not coordinate that well. So that's another consideration.
So looking at the map, is it?
No, I'm done. Yeah, I'm good. I just wanted to bring out those suggestions.
I guess my thought would be, we put low-density residential up along Jack's Court to appease Jack's Court with their neighbors. Conservation, wetlands, and the parkland obviously is a great thing. Then we also have low-density residential along Butler Road. Wondering if we, I'm not in agreement with an R3 type thing. I mean, we're sitting here talking about we don't have enough services as it is for the current population, so upping the population from a R2 or R1, to me, does not help that need. Thoughts on, and this is where I kind of relinquish to you guys, instead of having an MXD in that zone, if we're buffering Butler Road, Jack's Court with low-density and conservation, what would be the harm in keeping what you have now zoned MXD as an OPE?
Okay.
And that can be, and I also don't want us to forget, the major need for park, athletic fields, et cetera. I don't know if we have a major need for another MXD-type community. So for me, I'm actually comfortable low-density residential, as we're already maxed out on a lot of services for our community, on either side to kind of buffer, and then we stick with that OPE where the MXD is. I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. I'd look for a consensus with the council before kind of penning that in, but that would give us opportunity for medical or for athletic, whatever it is that the overall need would be.
True. Yeah, I'll just counter with, one of the main reasons why I was looking at the R3 for the set of low-density was the housing type that would be allowed. Smaller units, maybe more senior housing could be, not senior, but more affordability for the seniors that are downsizing or duplexes that make a nice senior community if it's designed right. That's one of the main reasons why I was looking at that, just more of affordable and the ability to bring in, to meet one of the needs of Cole and the senior housing potential.
Yeah, I can understand that. Now, I think the word affordable is a very generic term.
Yeah.
Because if you look at the cost of wild wood right now, I don't know who would say what's affordable and what is not.
Yeah.
I would also say that we're still in the process with the Beck property, and if we're looking at, if for some reason we don't go our way, that's going to be more senior housing. And then you look down the street at Eldersburg, they created an entire senior housing community that they're actually having trouble selling the units right now. So I don't want to go so far into one direction when we don't know what's going to happen with some of these other properties coming in and lock us into something for the next 10 years when we know for a fact, in my opinion, we need services. We need medical. We need athletic fields. We need these things. We don't know if we're going to need senior housing because we don't know what's going to happen with the Beck property yet. We don't know what's affordable, and if I'm being bluntly honest, you know, what the state or the county commissioners, especially the ones that don't represent our district, want is not at the top of my concern. So I would say, from my opinion, we stick with what we know we need, not for what we think we might need in the future.
I'll just clarify that, and maybe we can agree that. When I'm speaking affordable, I'm doing the 60% AMI, which is listed in here. As we did a combination, I did the 60%, which comes out to be, if I did my math right, for a family of four is close to $80,000 a year, would be 60% of the AMI. When I'm talking affordable housing, that's the income level I am referring to.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, something of that nature. So I don't want to be dinged when everybody say, oh, you know, Councilmember Munder's down for, you know, the $20,000 home. No, it's not. It's a, that is what the state would look at as affordable or even as low income for this area for a family of four is approximately $80,000.
Any other council members or the mayor have any input on?
No, no, I'm done. Thank you.
First of all, a question. John, does OPE have an open space requirement to it? Kind of like, I mean, commercial does not, correct?
Currently, no, it does not. I don't think OPE has a residential element.
I don't think it does either, but it does include things like campuses and things like that. So I would think that anything that came in there would naturally have open space in the design, or at least I would hope that it would. Whereas MXD does have an open space requirement, and I'm not making a pitch for MXD over there. I'm just telling you, you know, just got to think all the way through it, you know.
Not even a suggestion, possibly, is even a community commercial or a light commercial because, again, we don't have a lot of commercial real estate in the town for anybody to come in and develop. Now, again, a bedroom community still needs services.
Right.
So that's just an option also. And I would caution on the medium density because if you look at the legend, at Councilmember DeMoto's request, I did put in there, the low-density, of course, is RE and R1. The medium density is R3 to R5, high density is R7. So that sort of tells you where that's going to be. So if you, if you put medium-density designation on there, well, you can get five lots per acre.
Right.
You know, so you can't just go, well, William, what, three acre, yeah, three acre, three parcels per acre, three lots per acre.
And then I would offer a suggestion, and I would like to hear from Councilmember DeMoto one more time after we get through this. We're kind of jumping from chapter four to chapter five. And so on chapter five is where you find, it's on page 97, where you find the write-up on Harrison-Lashir, Lashir and Harrison properties B. And I would recommend that maybe we add a sentence or two there that says that the county should look at that as a potential, as setting aside some property for a senior center or a community center or something, and even put in there, if the planning commission and the council feel strongly about it, medical facilities, and maybe justify that OPE if that's what we're going to move this thing over to, kind of put some things in there that fit that, that OPE. So maybe that paragraph needs to be tweaked with a sentence or two. And my question, I mean, is that something that's agreeable to you? No, I'm asking Councilmember DeMoto.
Well, so just to round it out, Council President Washabaugh, so you have full consensus. I believe we should potentially keep Harrison-Lashir for annexation. It certainly provides groundwater resources, open space resources, parklands, so we're all in agreement on that. I can support conservation zoning and low-density zoning, like R1 and R2. I'm not sure I'm there yet on OPE. I'd like to think more about OPE. And let's not forget, if we're thinking about OPE and we want OPE to be something a little bit broader or whatever... whatever, you know, we can legislatively say, you know, OPE for us should look like X, and we can modify the zoning classification to make it something that works for us. You don't want to be doing that in the middle of a development process, but that's something we can do now to position ourselves if we want OPE. I'd have to think about OPE, my question is, give me the approximate acreage that we're talking about here that was originally slated for MXD, because that almost looks like eighty acres. If we switch this MXD to OPE, how many acres is that?
Again, the parcel itself is two hundred and fifty acres, I think this was about a hundred acres where the low density residential to the north and conservation was.
A hundred?
Using the old plan, about a hundred acres. And I'm going to say this was, this is probably fifty or sixty acres, so it could be up to eighty to a hundred acres, give or take.
Okay, and then what, my, my, my mind goes to the next set of questions, is what, how much land do you need for a workable, serviceable, you know, small-scale medical outpatient center, or whatever, you know, what, what kind of acreage do we really need for something like that? So those are the questions that I would start asking. I'll be open to it, it's not my preferred option, my preferred option is conservation, R1, R2, that's where I'm at right now.
Quick question, what can, can go into an OPE? I mean, can it be, obviously, medical, can there be other suitable things that the town actually needs now, like athletic fields, et cetera?
I don't think athletic fields are an OPE, but Ralph is pulling it up right now, to look at, and again.
It's on page seventy-one is the definition, on page seventy-one.
Well, Mr., while he's.
See, I knew I saw it, I just.
Page seventy-one, it's got the.
Yeah. I don't think it has a full, does it have a full list, Kim?
Council President, not to allow dead, dead air to go to waste here. Just we also, as we're discussing it, we should keep in mind, I'm not saying, I get what you're saying about what the county wants and everything else, we also have, since the county owns it, and this could only be achievable through annexation, we should also keep in mind that if we rezoned it to something, we want them to be able to deal with us with an annexation agreement, because they could also say, nah, you changed it to something that is not going to work, and what we want to put down, or stuff down your throat's down there, so we're just going to develop it the way we want. So that's something to keep in the back of our mind, too.
Agreed.
And, I mean, we can always talk about amending zones, right?
Yeah.
Like you guys were saying, so especially if we need to add in something like a park or an athletic field to a particular zone, I think as long as we keep an open mind about what could be, we could all figure it out.
Yes.
And if I, if I could, real quick, and when we were looking at this, we're really kind of split, because we were saying, we, we kind of need some more medical, we, we want something that can maybe work there, but we also need more commercial. So we don't know if we're getting medical, but we need the opportunities for commercial, we need more in the town. And that's kind of when we looked at it, and we said, all right, we have, what can do this, right? We have OPE, we have mixed, or MXD, and then we have commercial. So, and that was when we were trying to figure out what works best, and that's really up to you guys of what's going to work, but I know if MXD gets certain, you know, hesitation.
It's a, it's a stigma.
But we can only work with whatever zoning we have. And I know, like Councilman Demoter's talking about, oh, we can amend it, well, we don't have any amended zoning to fix that right now.
Right.
We don't have anything that can help squeeze in whatever. MXD's the only one that has the open space that, that will give us, and that's kind of what led us more towards that.
Right.
MXD could be seventy-five percent commercial.
Yeah, that's the problem.
So, and in, and in reality, that's the zone that we have the most control of, out of all the zonings that we have, and any changes. I know past history, whatever, but that's kind of why we kind of led that way, and that's because the open space, because those are the really only three things we could think to fit in there.
It's sort of.
Unless you guys change something else and give us something else to work with.
Yeah, and the fact that there's the seventy-five, twenty-five split, I'm just wondering, speaking of changing things, if we make it seventy-five commercial, twenty-five residential, I mean, again, we have to talk about all of this.
I want to, I want to offer a comment, and this is, this is about MXD, and I think this is where, somewhere along the way, we, we lost our way, and here's what I mean. And, and it's part of my comments for another section, but when you look at the 2013 master plan, it said, okay, that's when they were thinking about, well, what is MXD, what do we want it to accomplish? And their vision was, the intent of implementing a mixed-use zoning classification is to incorporate the general characteristics of existing historic centers into new development. So I think they were thinking about, you know, we want to carry the vertical MXD, historic look and feel of Main Street, and we want to carry that out on the Center Street. I'm, I'm just spitballing here, but it seems like that's kind of what they were thinking about. And that, when you read the wording in the 2013 master plan, that's what it implies. And now here we are, how many, twelve years later, or whatever, was MXD really intended to be implemented on a large tract of land in a standalone land parcel somewhere? Was that really the vision? I don't think that was the vision originally. The vision was, how can we kind of recreate our downtown zone and carry that out? So my premise is, MXD is not even what our town really wanted to start with. If, if it's not going to be implemented on Center Street, I don't know that it belongs anywhere in town, that, that's my view.
Now, John, did we settle the question about OPE?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Councilmember Demoter, I, I would tell you, when MXD was developed, and I think Bill would probably jump on board, Martina was around, nope, nope.
No, he was not.
Doesn't want any part of it.
That's way up, real quick.
I would agree, we weren't looking out toward Harrison-Lashir when, when MXD was created, we were, I think everybody was looking more toward a downtown area. And I don't think anybody's in disagreement that maybe MXD may not be the best thing over there. I do think it comes with some protections, as I already said, the protection being that the open space requirement within it, but then if somebody's going to develop the entire parcel, then you may not be saving yourself, so you could be setting yourself up for a can of worms. OPE was the zoning that was on there the last time that we were going through all the deliberations, but I would tell you, post-COVID, there were a lot of people that were like, OPE doesn't fit there, because it doesn't work anymore.
Yep.
Right.
Now we're talking about bringing it back there. You know, it's a mixed bag, because I, I know the citizens out there are concerned about it, but, you know, I, I would put it out there that, you know, if, if, if OPE for the reasons that all that fell apart, and if it is not a great zoning category now, then perhaps that's exactly what we want to put there, because it, it would, whoever develops it's really going to have to think about something that's, that's going to work in that category. So my only other question, before I stop talking about this altogether, John, are there any restrictions? We got low density residential, are we limited to, I don't think we can put full commercial right beside low density residential, am I incorrect in that?
We should have a buffering zone between the two.
Okay.
You are correct. But I do also want to say, and I think this was the discussion at the planning commission meeting for the MXD, was because then it allows the town council to have more input on the overall project, and I think that was sort of one of the underlying reasons why we chose MXD, because again, it kind of puts it into your court, which if it was LC, or CC, or OPE, or our, in our zone, it's all planning commission, and that's what we sort of dropped to, because we figured, well, at least then you guys have an opportunity to tailor the project, as you did with Mount Airy Crossing. I mean, that got tailored down a lot from what it initially was submitted as.
Yeah, that's an important reminder to the citizens who watch this, or who are here, MXD is the only category that requires a council vote, so believe me, it gets a lot more scrutiny than, than other things, because the planning commission is, is really tied to the land use article. You're, you know, it's a lot more black and white to y'all, whereas a council has a lot of flexibility, so, anyway.
Yeah, just on the MXD versus OPE discussion, I believe that MXD's got, you know, the seventy-five, the lot sizes are, are determined at concert, whatever, the planning figures of it, I believe under, at least under OPE, there's a minimum lot size that is developed, I think it's an acre to two acres, that could be incorrect, but it's somewhere, it's not, it's not like a twenty thousand square foot lot is the minimum size, there's a minimum lot size that you go from there, I believe under the original one, we were talking, you know, I think it was designed at like five acre lots, or something of that nature, so you do have an open space feel in the design, versus you could get potentially up there under MXD, a shopping center, up there, too, like there, because it's commercial, MXD commercial uses are more service-based, and related to the residential uses in, in that development. So even though your intention was not to put commercial closer to the existing commercial, if you put, you know, commercial up there that's service or shopping, you're still impacting, impacting the local existing businesses, because people aren't going to come down twenty-seven, they're going to stop right there.
Right.
And then you, then you will have, like, Safeway Shopping Center is a good area down there from the traffic off of Seventy, that area is doing good, because no one's coming down twenty-seven to go shopping at the Y's, or the food, food lines, so therefore you could have the unintended con, long-term consequence of creating, I want to say, a blight area throughout the city. Little certain commercial blight areas that are empty and not occupied, because there's a large commercial operation, shopping area, before you come into town. Because admit it, I mean, you're going to go to the first easiest one to get to when you're shopping, and a lot of the business probably, even though it's local, within town, probably comes a lot of outside-of-town people, too. So you're stopping people from coming down, downtown, or anything else, if you put a large commercial shopping center right at the north end, end of town. I'm, I'm done, Council President.
Just a, a quick comment to the mayor, and I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I think the council, I think we had an illusion of control, and we did have, we did have some control, don't get me wrong, but you, your control is bound by the code, and if the MXD code says you got a certain density, then that's the density, and that's what the developer is going to do. And this is why I, I, I am not prepared to zone anything MXD, until we do a full-blown lessons-learned review of what went well, what went wrong, and what kind of improvements would need to be made to an MXD ordinance. I mean, two things right off the bat, for all of the control, all of the comments, all of the process with the Beck property, that plan was still seventy-five percent high-density, twenty-five, single-family home, that's the way it ended up. And, and the homes were not integrated, they were not integrated, you had, you had.
Real quick, we.
Homes, and then you had.
Councilmember Demoter.
So I'm just saying.
Councilmember Demoter.
Gotcha, thank you.
No, it's okay, I'm just saying, we're not going to go through the Beck property thing.
Yeah, yeah.
We get it.
All right.
I guess my question is, do we have a consensus with the council, that we'd like to see it zoned something other than MXD? Do we have that consensus?
You got me on that one.
Simple yes or no?
I would say yes. Yeah, just see, see what can come up with.
Just, yeah, we're, we're just dragging this along, so I want to, I want to, I want to. I'm not even going to say what it is, but I mean, do we want to explore other options other than MXD for that specific area of the Harrison-Lashir property? Okay, I have two?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. So what we might do, I mean, there's, there's, the general consensus, we're probably going to need another workshop, I would say. So, why don't we table this discussion, so that we don't just spend one whole day on, on this, and if we have time at the end, we can, we can revisit. I would be in that consensus as well, I'm looking more towards a LC-type situation with low density surrounding it, but that conversation is going to take a little bit longer. So, let's, if you're good with it, let's table. We have a consensus that MXD is probably not what this council sees in, in that zone, and then we can revisit it.
Can I?
Okay.
Continue on my little comments on chapter four, the little word changes and stuff of that nature?
Yeah, as long as it's not typos and stuff, we can.
No, it's, no, it's not typos.
Okay.
And if we need to continue on to another topic.
Well, I do, I do want to get through the proposed rezonings of the current town properties, but I'll tell you what.
We can do that, sir.
Can you do it in four minutes?
Nah, not, not the complete way I want to, but I could meet it, but I would rather the rezoning of the current property is much more important than what, and if we have time, I'll go back.
Okay.
If we're having another meeting, I can go back.
Yep.
You just used a minute, Carl.
Oh, no, see.
That's fine, that's fine.
I told you, no.
So is that, is, is the consensus of the council and the planning commission, you guys okay if we move on, looking at the rezonings of the current town properties now?
Absolutely.
I'm not opposed, I just wanted to remind them that we do have one other annexation proposal, the South Main Street.
Yep.
Which also proposes MXD, so I don't know, from the discussion of the Harrison-Lashir, do we also want to look at that other MXD? And I believe I'm accurate, that no other beyond those two is MXD being proposed, so I'm just saying, while we're rich in discussion on MXD, do we want to quickly touch upon our thinking on South Main Street?
Yeah.
It's, it's up to you.
No, I think that's smart, I think that's smart, yeah, absolutely.
And so that would be page ninety-nine, item M, Mike. And again, that's a split zoning proposal, it's two zones, again, in consideration of existing community, low density, and then the balance MXD, and John is pulling up. Right, and, and similar kind of rationale, I'll just kind of get ahead of the question again, why? This is the I-70, twenty-seven interchange corridor, same argument with regard to providing the town through annexation more opportunity for commercial, you know, commercial build-out, with the limited inventory of commercial parcels we have right now, being respectful of the existing community, and again, having a mix of some commercial opportunity along with additional residential affordable housing. And I'll defer to the other commissioners, again, trying real hard not to hog the mic here, our thinking on that South Main Street area, I welcome your comments also for, for the council.
Well, again, that, I think before was OPE.
That was where they, they had a proposed gas station, I think, going there years ago.
No, that's not this, not these parcels, these are currently outside of the corporate limits.
Okay.
Yeah.
See, that was right here.
Thanks, Mayor.
This is, this is South Main Annexation.
Okay.
Future Annexation.
Sure, yes, please do.
I have one question on this MXD, South Main, so I noticed you've got the lines that, are those the existing townhouses that go over the rail tunnel that you drew in?
Um, yeah, so the rail tunnel is approximately right here.
So you've got low-density residential there, my question is, if you go down to the right, where you've got the people on South Main Street where the yellow is, nope, keep going, go left, right there.
Yep.
So you've got a lot of residential there, and it's a lot, and that goes back, too, that street goes back and there's houses.
Correct.
My question would be, my concern would be, we should afford them the same respect we're giving to the people in the other properties, and have low-density residential, have similar behind them, as opposed to, you know, give them a buffer.
Yeah, so the.
Like Day Avenue goes back, and there's people that live a few houses back on Day, my concern is that putting MXD or OPE right behind them when we're giving a buffer, did you consider that?
Yes, and I'm going to refer to John, the community you're identifying as a neighbor to this proposed annexation actually is in chapter four for some extensive rezoning.
Yeah, so this, this, it's all part of a rezonings of those parcels, with the Vazler property coming in, asking for CC.
Right, okay.
All those on the west side of South Main extended.
Forgot that, thank you.
To LC, so we really didn't need the buffer, and normally, those parcels that are back Day Avenue, or Day Road, they would be part of that future annexation, and whatever designated land use we put on that would be, be, if they were part of the annexation, would be changed to that. were part of the annexation, would be changed to that zone.
So that would be the, the pink, like, the pink one that you've drawn?
Yeah, which is currently zoned, future designated land use is OPE for all this whole, whole area. Again, because OPE is sort of a dying.
After COVID.
Zone because of the COVID and, and brick and mortar stores are sort of weaning away, waning away. So that was the thought, and that's the only reason why, and again, it doesn't represent well here, you know, maybe this should have been red down here, but we hadn't made those choices for land uses for the future, so.
I forgot that. Thank you, John, for, but I just wanted to make sure people understood that, so someone didn't say, have the same question too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any input on this property?
I'll just say MXD, MXD or some other type of commercial use, maybe? Because if memory serves, it's approximately a hundred and twenty acres, somewhere around there, maybe. Some, I'm just pulling up, I think so. But I also noticed that Frederick County just, just created a overlay zone for data center zoning, or they're talking about it. And that concerns me since it's right in Frederick County, and I think it's some of the overlay requirements, I got to, we can talk to the Frederick County Planner next time about it too, that it has to be within two miles of an interstate and high-tension lines and yada, yada, everything else. So we should try and at least keep that on the map as something. So if somebody does want to put something of that monstrosity there, like a data center or something, we can say we've got first dibs on it. And also, just to throw it out there too, maybe for the Planning Commission, not for general discussion, that we may want to start updating some of our commercial zoning and stuff if we seriously don't want a data center, if it's legal to say you're prohibitive use on that, because they are coming sooner, sooner or later, so.
And correct me if I'm wrong, there's nothing really in our zoning for that now, right?
For data centers.
For data centers.
No. It's something we need, we should start considering or looking at it later. But now, we should keep it as something, or at least keep it on our books to make sure that we get first dibs on it or something.
All right, so I'll start with that. Do we have a general consensus from the council that we want to keep this section of property in the master plan for a potential annexation area?
Yes.
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 I'm not sure.
Okay. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we have a general consensus of that. Moving forward on that, do we have a general consensus that it could be MXD, or that it, we should also put that in the same boat as Harrison LaShir to actually look at it a little bit closer and think about that?
I would say what you just said, Harrison LaShir, put it in the same boat, look at maybe a potential alternative zoning to it. Because again, MXD does allow for a residential and might not be the best location for, say, seventy-five commercial or residential, or the types of residential that's allowed in the mixed, mixed use.
Okay. Yes or no from the rest?
Yes. Agree.
Agreed.
Same, same, okay, so we'll, we'll, we agree it should definitely stay in, but let's look at the zoning options for it, and then we can table that for the next, what's going to be the next workshop? Okay, all right. Chairman Gant, would you be opposed, or do you have any other things for this specific topic, or would you be good going to the rezonings of the current town properties?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Chapter four.
Yep.
Do we want to start with the first parcel, or do we want to go directly to South Main? So inside the binder, this sort of goes in.
Since it was already brought up.
Yeah, okay.
I would just page seventy, what page, Ralph, chairman? Does all this begin on the seventy-five, it looks like?
Seventy-five, seventy-four?
I would just say start at the first one and go down the list.
That's, that's, that's fine, we'll start at the top. Yep. So we're talking page, chapter four, page seventy-five?
Seventy-five.
The full parcel.
So this is the full parcel, this is a remaining portion, kind of, from lot seventy-four or three it is, from the Brittany Manor subdivision. They had, they had got to their max residential units they could have as part of their subdivision. So this two and a half, or two and a half acre parcel, which that needs to be added in there, is currently zoned R-two, and the applicant was asking to turn it to industrial. So it'd be another lot in the back acre circle subdivision that'd be industrial. Basically is surrounded by industrial, industrial, except for to the east and the north, and I guess the south a little bit, towards the Brittany Manor subdivision. So the planning, previous planning commission was recommending it going from R-two to industrial.
Question, John. Farther in the plan, and it says under parks, there's supposed to be a back acre park somewhere to be built.
This parcel right here.
Okay, that's what I thought. And what's next to between, is that like conservation?
This is open space that was part of the dedication to the town from Brittany Manor. So this is all undevelopable.
Okay.
And again, this is the designated park.
And how big is that parcel, do you know? I meant to ask the, the three-three-nine, what we're talking about.
I think it's two and a half acres or so. I can look it up and.
Uh, no, rough, rough guess, I think.
I think it's about, between a two and a quarter and two and a half.
Okay.
So a prime candidate for an industrial business to come and, you know, possibly come into the town and, and bring more jobs. If you, if you've driven back out back acre circle recently, it's definitely expanded a lot of the different priority installs out there. You'll see where they upload and furnish police cars and those type of things. So it's, it's growing, and I think there's only two or three other lots that are available, and some of them are smaller than this. So that was where I think our thinking was.
Okay. Pending questions, I mean, I'll go right to a general consensus of the council to keep it in the way it is, or is there any changes?
One question, John. So that's Brittany Manor, we, we have the parcel, we have the open space that we can't really use, the park, and then Brittany Manor's farther than that. So this.
And it's up to the, the north and east.
So is this as you go up the hill?
Yeah, this is kind of going down the valley right here. This is the Cedar Brook, I think it is, which is the hardscape.
So it's abutting other industrial, it's not really that close to the houses?
It is.
Okay.
I mean, there's other industrial lots that are closer to the house than this.
All right, Tim.
Okay. General consensus would be?
That's true.
Yeah.
I would, due to the location of the park next to it, the conservation, the open space, and backing up to the Patapsco River, I would leave it as R-two, just for residential. They can still get, receive some houses for it.
They can only put one house on that parcel.
Oh, just, just one? Okay. All right, never mind. Okay, that takes away that one then, okay.
I'm, I'm a, I'm a nay on rezoning it to industrial, just for the record.
I'm a nay as well. I think it's just too close to the other houses in the park that's not there yet.
I'll just do a formal nay then, too, on that one, since it, since I didn't really say yay, yea, nay, but I'll do nay.
So we have a consent, we have a consensus already, though?
Is there another zoning option? Because I feel like putting a house right there would be weird too, like, just putting one house right there.
Well, the, the applicant has asked for the rezoning.
Got it, okay.
So in, in my thinking, if, if industrial is disapproved, it remains as R-two.
But just for a process, because if, might get changed later, not later, but as we go through all these rezoning requests, if we deny a request at this stage, I think I know the answer, but I just want to get it out there, can they come back later and say, okay, they want to change that from an R-two to, say, an R-five, or an R, or a limited commercial, or would they have to wait another ten years to do it? I know the, I know the requirements for an out-of-cycle request is either a mistake or change of use. But, but if we leave it, but if the council has decided that we leave it R-two.
That might be a Tom question.
Yeah, I know, yeah. You get what I'm saying, it's like.
They have until we adopt it?
Right, so these, these, all these parcels will come into you as a resolution for you to adopt, is that correct, Heather? That's correct. So this will come in front of you once again as well for another vote, and it would probably come in, I guess, I think it would still come in with a request for R-two to industrial. So as we're going through this, it's not, no decision-making here.
Right, so we don't need to worry about keeping it in or not keeping it in. It's, they're requesting it, so they have the right to request it, so therefore it's going to come across our table.
It'll still come across as it is.
Okay, so we can just ask questions about.
All right.
Won't the applicant come back in at a certain point too? In the process and?
I mean, I guess when it goes to the formal vote, yeah, but go ahead, Heather, you have something, please.
Yeah.
Typically, the process is after you adopt your comprehensive plan, is you go through with your comprehensive rezoning. Generally, those, that discussion leads to continuity with your comprehensive master plan, but it can be a journey. So if you're not quite sure right now, the Planning Commission can keep it as is, and then when that ordinance is actually in front of the legislative body to change that zoning, it doesn't have to be entirely compliant.
It's kind of where I was at. I don't want to just make a quick decision based on, on this to approve or deny a rezoning request. I think they're asking for the request inside the master plan process, which is what they need to do. I don't think we're going to make any decisions right now to remove or keep in. We'll make the decision to approve when it comes to our table.
Okay, gotcha. So I'll, I'll keep it nay for right now on that.
There's no vote.
Yeah.
But I'm not in consensus.
That's fine.
To leave it, okay.
So, all right, then.
I just want to get my terms, my terms right too.
But it remains in the plan.
Yes. Yeah, I don't think we, I don't even think we had the ability to remove it if they requested it.
You just, you wouldn't, you wouldn't accept the request when it comes formally in front of you.
Right, right.
So again, this is some parcels along South Main Street. This is, trying to get your bearings here, so this is a Verizon Distribution Center, Eliana Plaza, Food Line Shopping Center, Cardicues in the red here as well. These parcels, one fourteen-twenty-two, fourteen-twenty-three, fourteen-twenty-eight, and fourteen-twenty-nine, the Planning Commission was looking at those currently are, well, excuse me, I'm sorry, twenty-eight, twenty-three, and twenty-two currently are zoned NP, and they were requesting to come in to the LC, Limited Commercial. They were sort of, became NP as a buffer zone in the last master plan. Again, these are parcels that are currently along Main Street. One of the, one of the people was actually, fourteen-twenty-eight came in and requested enlargement of their building, but because of their NP zoning, they were unable to expand their parcel, or expand their business, which is Dr. Cappuccino. So he was wanting to put on a little small surgery center off on the one side and expanding parking to accommodate it, but in the NP, he's unable to do so.
Okay.
If we're going to talk about him, that's.
We're not making a decision, so you're fine to sit here.
Are you sure?
You just don't say anything. So parcel fourteen-twenty-nine is requesting to become the MP. They're currently zoned RE. No, no, wait, I'm sorry. No, you're RE, right? Yeah, you're currently RE.
We're, we're just conscious of ethical violations, that's all.
Yeah, so.
So we're being very cautious, that's all.
As part of this rezoning request, turning the parcels that run along Main Street to LC, the logical selection is to turn fourteen-twenty-nine into NP, which would create that buffer from the other residential. There's already a buffer of NP against the rear of the properties, so there's, there's no real impact to any additional residential or existing residential for making these LCs, and allows, again, the owners of that property to be able to increase their business to, you know, bring more revenue and people into town for things. And he has problems getting time at surgical centers, so he would like to have the opportunity. And I know during COVID, he was actually doing emergency calls. If somebody were to get injured, instead of going to some emergency room or some other urgent care, he, he was able to come in and stitch people up, I've heard that.
He still is.
Yeah, he's still, he's still doing, it's almost on-call. He's like available twenty-four-seven.
That's very good, too.
Sorry.
It's very good, too.
He's very good, yeah.
Quick question, just more, the lots across the street where the Verizon Center is current zoning on that?
Is LC, if you look, that's kind of LC as well.
Okay.
So part of Eliana, and this was a map correction, in my opinion, that the Eliana Plaza should be CC all the way up to the edge of this line, and this would be LC.
Gotcha. All right, that's, but they didn't apply for anything, those two, we're just talking about.
They did not, no.
Okay. Fourteen-twenty-eight, you said he wants to expand and stuff, will that create an, an issue there later, do you know, with traffic, or does, we can't determine that right now? Like, say, if he wants to add a little surgical center to it, or, or something of that. Let me just say together, if we change that with the existing building there to LC, and anybody that would come in that would potentially expand the operation there or building, would that cause issues there for parking or other concerns with the neighborhood there? Because if memory serves me correct, the two houses behind that one.
It's an empty lot right behind the parcel.
And they didn't want to, and they didn't want it, they were approached to rezone, but they didn't want to because they wanted to save the lot for inheritance or something like that. So they will remain residential, correct? Or whatever their current zoning is?
Currently, yes.
And then the doctor's office behind that, what is that?
This is NP as well.
Okay. So it's fourteen-twenty-three.
And what'd you say the two lots behind it are? Did you say those are empty lots?
Well, no, so there is a, a parcel that doesn't have a house on it.
Right.
And probably is too small to actually put a house on. The owner of the rear lot behind that owns this lot as well, so.
And what's his zone?
They're also NP.
NP.
So it'd be NP, NP, and NP at the.
Thank you.
Rear of the parcels, and then LC along the front with NP on the fourteen-twenty-nine.
Let me go and speed this process up a little bit. Why don't we go through, just, the reason I wanted to go over this is just to let everyone know what the proposed rezonings would be. Why don't we just go through, have John just do a quick overview of them? We don't need to discuss each one, because they will all come across our table.
I agree.
Where we can actually dive in pretty deep.
That's fine, yeah.
I don't think any of us should make any determination to remove anyone's request of rezoning sitting at this table. Let's, let them go through the process, and we'll make that decision at the council table.
I think that's wise.
Thank you.
So let's just get a quick overview of, of kind of what we're looking at, and then, and then we'll go from there.
All right, so this is the big request. This is a Vosler property, which is number one. And so I do know that this map is not completely accurate, because parcel number six has, I think, possibly subdivided off this parcel, or, I might be speaking out of turn. I think that the applicant of number one was looking to purchase this parcel as well to make a larger lot, but we're not talking about that. Anyway, so, you know, the Planning Commission basically looked at this parcels, or all these parcels, and tried to consider what was the best option. I think, again, we are lacking in CC zone parcels in the town for development or redevelopment. So our, our thinking was that one would become C, and let me look at two, two, three. So, yeah, so, so it's all CC on the east side, and then even seven. So, so currently, whoops, sorry about that. This cursor's really sensitive being zoomed in. So, yeah, so the, the determination was that parcels one through seven should be all CC, and all the parcels to the west of South Main Extended would be LC, except for the parcel which is actually off the map here. There's a CSX parcel that's within the corporate limits that wasn't zoned at all in the previous maps. And my thought was we would be zoning that NP, which would create that natural buffer between this and the Rising Ridge duplexes that go down the hill there. So that's sort of the parts that were out there, so let's move on to the next parcels.
So we're done with the South Main then?
Yep.
Okay.
And this, this.
Oh, sorry. I just, can I interrupt for a second?
I guess.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, real quick, when we talked about medical stuff, too, we were also, like, within LCCC, that might be a nice place for somebody to stick an office. Or a small surgery center, or, you know, something like that. Like South Main, we had, when we got more into the, you know, weeds with that.
Can you remind me, what's, what's in the red area?
Chick-fil-A.
Yeah.
McDonald's, KFC. This is the medical center across 27 where Carroll Super Fresh used to be, maybe?
Yeah.
Are we okay to move on?
Do you want, do you want a comment, or you don't want any comments?
Now, we can, we'll comment on that when it comes across our table, and we can kind of dive in.
Again, this is the intersection of Woodersville Road and Maryland Route 27. The applicant came in asking for MXD, if I'm not mistaken. As the planning commission sat there and thought about it, currently, they're running a business off of this residential property. It's, I don't know if you noticed, there was a guy had a big motorboats for sale there, or a big RV trailer. Well, he said both, but, but anyway, so, you know, currently, it's, it's very peculiar, too, the way it's mapped. Carroll County has made these map amendments, from my understanding. It looks like there was a right-of-way which, which was much larger for 27, the way it was zoned, or what it was a map indicated. So again, currently, this is RE, I think, have RE. And I think the planning commission came in to say, maybe this should be better NP parcel, because they are running a business out of it to make him more in compliance with, with the use as being on, on the parcel currently. But that is currently our residential existing, and again, it's 2.43 acres. And this one also, the applicant came in asking for actually industrial. The planning commission sat and talked about this one as well. And again, during this process, all, all neighbors were notified, the property was signed. We had sort of a public meeting as the planning commission sat and discussed it with adjoining property owners and the property owner. So again, this is more of a map amendment in my eyes, that the industrial should never went onto his parcel. So I think it was just when you get into the map, sometimes there's some nuances that get missed. So anyway, this is a business, so again, we were thinking our NP would be the correct zoning for this parcel, which gives that buffer between the industrial and these existing residential homes. We're done.
Do we want to go through a quick proposed town property redevelopment?
Sure.
Using the urban renewal? I mean, you guys want to look into that?
Which parcels are you talking about? I'm sorry.
Just the redevelopment section. I mean, we, we just passed the urban renewal, so I want to see what they have in the master plan that will utilize that.
Okay, so this is, this is the available, oh no, this is the available land for infill development. Here we are. So the proposed properties for redevelopment.
89. Got changed.
89. So again, we'll just, I'll just run down, down really quick. This is the Cold Storage, which is, of course, Hill Street and Prospect Avenue. It's 6.8 acres, currently zoned, downtown zoned. The rail yard property, Gallagher, which is North Main, which is where the train depot is. It's a 2.3 acres in the DTZ zone. This parcel's peculiar because it, most of our trail is on the property, and we have an easement across that. But we have received a development plan that's, well, we haven't received a development plan. We had a pre, pre-conference to talk about what the owner was thinking of doing on the parcel. So we're working towards that being redone. The rail yard property, and this is Scranton Property, this is the one that is also in the, yeah, the rail yard as well. So he owns Putt, Puttapsico Bike, he also owns Basket and Blossom, or Blossom and Basket. And his parcel is 39,369 square feet. And then the brewery, Scranton Property, 1.3 acres, of course, we currently have a brewery on there. He also has a plan that was submitted even before I started here for redevelopment, kind of just north of the caboose, sort of on that entrance area. So that's sort of not currently under review, but had a, a plan submitted in the past, or discussed, is what I'll say. Center Street Properties LLC, which of course, which is the shops of yesteryear, 1.5896 acres, DTZ. Southern States 1 and 2, Southern States 1, which I think is the one to the north of the property. So the one that currently has trucks on it, please silence your cell phones. Has the storage buildings and the tractor trailers and the fenced-in yard to the left just before the police station. And then the south, Southern States 2, it's about a half an acre. And we actually, this is the one that had the transmission, I guess, excuse me, the cell tower transmission company. The roof collapsed, it's currently in a dilapidated condition. We have, I'm supposed to be meeting with somebody over there this coming week to look at the parcel, and what the possibilities could happen for that, so that's possibly under redevelopment in the near future. Fleming Furniture, .7 acres, of course, this is the old furniture store on Ridge Avenue, Ridge, Ridgeville Boulevard. Would like to see something done there. The Flatiron Building, of course, is owned by the town. Meniscus Parkin Lot is also owned by the town, and those are both in DTZ.
Are there any other properties that you can think of, anybody that needs to be added into this for the potential revitalization? I, I feel like everything's checked off. I just want to make sure that we're not missing anything. I mean, the Fleming Furniture Building's obviously one of the biggest out there, as well as Cold Storage.
I hate to say it, but 7 East Ridgeville, you know, I mean, it doesn't need to be redeveloped, it needs to be finished. That one, I could make it on the list, but is it redevelopment? Not really, but it still needs to be completed. So maybe we put that in there as an asterisk or something, I don't know what advantage it would be to put it in there. I don't know, it's, it's stagnant currently.
And that's kind of what the whole urban renewal.
I mean, it could count.
Council President?
So maybe we talk about adding that, I mean, I don't know if it'll help, but I, I don't think it will certainly hurt either. Think about it.
Well, my, my question is, and maybe I missed it, do we address urban renewal authority?
Not yet.
Specifically in here, somewhere.
I believe there is.
Page 91.
Page 91, okay.
Mayor, I recognize the recent authority, just a few lines. I didn't want to elaborate, because I know this is new authority for the, for the town.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
2033.
So, so I'm okay with that in there the way that it is. I don't think that we should attach, in any other paragraphs dealing with development, that we should attach an urban renewal authority clause to it. Because I think that, that kind of, that's, that's not a road we want to go down initially. If a developer wants to work with the town, or, or work with another entity to get something done, you know, we, urban renewal is a, is a arrow in the quiver, should we need it. But hopefully, we don't. Now, having said that, I was reviewing the Cold Storage property paragraph, and I, I'm sorry that I missed it earlier, but where it says the town and the loan, landowner have a place, this is line 2440.
Yeah.
Where it says the town and the landowner have applied for state financial assistance towards remediation. I, I don't think we ever applied on that property. So I, I think it would be okay to X out the word have applied, and, and put could apply.
Oh, okay.
And, and that would keep that door open, and then I would get rid of that last sentence that says unfortunately, that application was denied, just get rid of that sentence. And that way, your intent is still in there that, that we could apply for a brownfield, but we, we applied over on the CSX side, that's where we had the issue at. But thank you.
And for clarity, strike on 91, the authority paragraph, is that?
No, I'm okay with the paragraph being in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I just don't want it tagged. I see Heather raising her eyebrow.
Mayor, there is a sentence there, the offered list above, referring to the infill and redevelopment properties of potential redevelopment properties may be a viable starting point for exercising this new authority. So I didn't know if, how you felt about that.
That's what I was asking, because
What line?
We do kind of indirectly tag.
I would almost say it's not a viable starting point, I would think that would be a last
Right.
ditch effort, so we could.
So, I mean, we know it's out there, I'm not.
Strike the last sentence?
Yeah, certainly, the last sentence. Does that ease your concern as well?
Which line are we talking about?
2486.
2486.
Just to.
On line 2486, the last sentence.
We'll end it with slum areas, and then strike everything else.
There you go.
That doesn't sound right to him, but okay.
Says what it says.
Actually, actually, that's in the authority.
Yeah. Not, we, we don't have to discuss it now, Mr. Mayor, but there is, I believe, maybe under chapter 6 or something, I have it in my notes. There is a whole nother discussion somewhere farther in the plan regarding urban, the urban renewal. So I had it marked to further discuss later, so I'm good with just bringing that up, that if, when the planning commission, to point, to point it out there for other people to look at, too. There's, there's another section somewhere on that, so.
Yes, I'll get right to it. If you go to page 107, we created an objective related to that redevelopment. And so if you look at Objective D51, it speaks to now using that authority to do redevelopment. And if, and if the council sees that as too strong.
Had some concerns with the wording, but as I said, if we're holding other meetings, we can discuss that later. Mr. President?
What we tried to do was offer below that authority, as you all know, there needs to be things done to exercise it legally, and, you know, set criteria for what needs the threshold of a blighted area. What's the process to contact the landowner, you know, all those things are, are yet to be ironed out. The objective was kind of aiming toward getting that going.
Yeah. Go ahead, you can ask.
I just have a question, or see if anybody else would like to run over or review the available land for the infill property on page 87 and 88, in chapter 5.
Just real quick, when we talk about.
Yeah, I, some of it is like, I know where a lot of it is, I just don't know where every flat is, or plot is.
I don't want to bounce, I just have a thought on the urban renewal wording.
Oh, no, once we're done on that, I'm fine, yeah, I'm cool.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to shy away from stating facts. And I don't want to shy away from saying that if you don't take care of your property, we absolutely will exercise what is within our rights to do. So I am not opposed to saying exactly what that says. You know, I, I firmly feel that some property owners have taken advantage of the town, and let their properties go blighted, and let them look honestly dilapidated. So for me, I'm not concerned with the wording at all. In fact, I, I want it in there, because I don't want to be challenged if we, as a council, feel like we need to implement as a, after we've already gone through every other possible means to try and work through it the, you know, the cohesive way. I, I don't want to shy away from this, personally.
Oh, sorry, real quick, we just learned at the conference that, because, you know, there was a session about why is that building vacant? And one of the reasons was they get tax breaks for it.
Yeah.
So it might be something that we think about.
Council President, when you're referring to the language that you want to leave in, are you talking about the stuff in line 2486 and 87?
No, I don't want to necessarily tag any specific properties with it, but when we're talking about Objective D51 and 2837, I don't think we need to soften our language at all. I don't think we need to remove it. I think we need to let it be known that we are fully within our means to use it. We don't want to, but, but we will.
No, I'm just trying to figure out, since we had several discussion points.
No, just, just 2837, I, I agreed with not tagging current properties now without going through due process first.
Yeah, I just, I've had questions on other stuff, but on that, but no, I'm good, okay, keep, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the lines of what you said, where would be the appropriate place to put in the property that we just discussed? That's just sitting there not being finished, the Ridgeville Boulevard one?
Is it vacant? I mean, nobody's living there.
It's vacant.
It's vacant.
So I, I agree with Council President and Chairman Gant, that that needs to possibly be in here somewhere. What do you think, Mayor?
I don't think it needs to be in here. I think that accountability toward the permits that they have is, is something that we've been working on for a couple of years. And every time, correct me if I'm wrong, when their permits start coming up, we start poking at them, and then they take the next step. So I don't think it's a master plan issue, I think it's a, a issue to be dealt with by staff.
All right, good enough.
Would you agree?
I don't disagree, no.
Perfect, then we'll leave it on that side. All right, any other questions, as far as that? So I had going on to chapter 6 with transportation. I want to take a consensus of the council, so that I'm not just reporting, I mean, are you guys comfortable moving on with chapter 6? Do you think that there's something else more important that we need to check on?
I'm just good with just going over the infill on, as I said, on 87 and 88, just not to discuss it, just to, so we can, if we have questions on the actual location of some of this stuff, of the properties, like the, my main question is the Yanitz property? Y-O-N-E-T-Z? I know where the Rimby, the Walsh.
Which page are you on, Ralph?
87.
Okay, my bad. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Just the general location of those? It's probably on the map, so I can.
I think both of these are, are, it's a parcel that kind of comes down towards 27.
They're on the map that's included in, in here, right?
Yes.
Okay, just one question that considers, why is Windy Ridge Park for infill development?
Is that never rezoned? I would say it's because it was on the 2013 plan.
Okay, so this was just a carryover, okay.
I think so, that would be my gut feeling, so we could probably remove that. It is vacant land, though.
Yeah, I know, but it's, it gives the impression that we're gonna, I, I know it's something good, like park development, but it's kind of like indicating that we're willing to sell it or get rid of it and develop it, which is a park, and that's not going to happen, or we shouldn't be considering that. And then bottom two, Green Tree Village and Dennis Subdivision, as I said, they have two current development plans approved and stuff, so should we leave that, or just consider taking those off, maybe?
Oh, since they're already going through it.
Dennis Subdivision's completed.
Yeah, exactly.
But we haven't received a building permit on it.
Okay.
Green Tree has not been finalized.
Okay.
So.
It's your call, I'm just saying.
Well, it's now, it's your call.
What was that?
It's your call.
Yeah, well, not our call, but I'll take, I'll consider your advice when making that call, if it should be. And then on page 88, it says Buffalo Road, is that the one on the Sharp Corner, whatever it's called now, Full Property?
Full Property, exactly. It's only eight homes, it's coming in, it's nine acres, eight homes.
I'm good.
So again, I think we should still leave that in there, because it's still.
Yeah, it's definitely not even.
We are, we did receive a plan for review, so it is sort of moving through the process.
If nothing's been really finalized on it, there's still land available. If nothing's been really finalized on it, there's still land available, it's still available for, it's still empty land, so I'm good with leaving it in, just
Council President, and if, in that same area, can you see how we treated the Beck property as infill?
As what?
As, as infill property.
Okay, yeah.
And so the data associated with that is based upon the proposals that we've seen, so
Yeah, okay, I'm cool.
We can strike that, but we felt like we wanted to fill it out with what its potential is, right? As we do with all the other infill, so.
I'm, I'm good, thank you, Chairman. I'm good with moving, moving to six now.
We should make a note on that, that, um,
Or something, saying that potentially, since they are currently going to review, maybe an asterisk or something, just saying, just so people don't think, what, it's, if, if you feel it's appropriate
We'll talk to Tom maybe?
Yeah, or something, yeah.
Is it duck?
I'm good.
It does have a note attached.
We do.
Yeah, so
It does, okay.
It's right below the chart.
Yeah.
We have note two, oh, sorry, on page eighty
Twenty-three ninety-five.
It should be right below the chart on yours.
Data, uh, the data sources, you mean?
Yeah.
Right below the
Okay, I got you, got you.
Yeah, so, so to fill out the columns to the right of that infill property, we use the data from the pre-concept plan.
Okay.
For lack of any other source of data.
All right. I'm, okay, I'm not going to
We'll check with, we'll check with Tom to make sure. We'll do that.
We can discuss later too, yeah. I'm good now, Council President, thank you.
Chairman Gant, before we go to chapter six, um, do you have any points of contention from the commission or anything that you would like to run by the council before we just go into transportation? Is there anything that
In a broad sense?
Yeah, I mean, anything that, that we need to discuss openly outside of the rezoning and stuff that we already did, which I knew was one.
It, it's a great question, um, and, and I certainly would open my fellow commissioners if I get, if I get it wrong. I think perhaps in debate and contention, um, I think we've covered that with the annexation and the proposed zoning districts in those.
Okay.
The only, that's the only thing that comes to mind.
Okay, I just want to make sure before we just keep
But I'll look down the line here. Kim, do you?
No, we discussed it with Harrison Legere.
And Steve, good, Bill?
Yeah.
So, I, I think we've already hit those
Okay, I just want to make sure we cover that if we
Great, great question.
Are we good going on to chapter six now with transportation?
Yeah, I'm good, yeah.
Okay, I'll open up the floor for anybody. I know Councilmember DeMoto probably has.
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead, sir.
Thank you.
So, it's a knit and knit, it's an easy one. Your, uh, your header at the top of page one oh nine.
Yeah, I said the same thing.
The chapter, the chapter seven?
I kept looking at it going, wait a minute. I was like, am I missing chapter six?
I did the same thing. Okay.
Now, I called it a while ago.
Stuff that happens when you go through twenty-five
That's my bad, so.
I've got a, I've got a line twenty-nine sixty-one.
In chapters
Chapter six.
Chapter six.
Page one eleven.
Okay.
Twenty-nine sixty-one. Okay, the last, I'm going to give you an edit and then an extra sentence. So, at the end of line twenty-nine sixty-one, it says, "The right-of-way and paving width for Main Street is very narrow and pedestrian accessibility." I'm suggesting you add the words "and safety" must be addressed.
After accessibility and safety.
Yes, and I'm going to give you another sentence to add after that. And I, I can give you this, I have it all in a matrix.
Okay.
But an additional sentence would be, "Especially in the downtown business zone, pedestrian accessibility and safety, traffic roadway safety, and hazards posed by existing parking spaces along the narrow roadway must be addressed." And that is not just an opinion, that is also backed up by, by data and input from the EDC. And I, I'll read you, just so you guys know, uh, EDC has provided comments, albeit a little late, but, um, one of the comments from the EDC, this is a quote, said, "I know this has been brought up before, but Main Street downtown needs to change. It gets worse every day. It's extremely tight driving from Parkett Avenue to pass the Upper Deck. Parking spots on the southbound lanes need to be removed. It's getting dangerous, parking and driving through that area." So, that's, that's another input that suggests my additional language.
Okay.
So, I have that and I can hand it to you. It's in a comment matrix.
Okay.
Okay?
I think we all got copies of it as well.
Yeah.
I've got a copy of it now.
Just one quick comment or just, not a comment, but a correction maybe or clarification before we start talking about what I think the meat of this chapter is about. On, on page one eleven, twenty-nine forty-three, it's got Maryland twenty-seven classified as an intermediate arterial. If you look on the preceding page, functional and classification categories, there is no intermediate arterial listed there. So, it's either, that definition needs to be added, should be added to that, or the intermediate arterial needs to be replaced with one or the other defined ones, just so we know what we're talking about, what a intermediate arterial length road is.
I, I got that.
Oh, that makes sense?
Yeah.
And if I may, I'll work with Barney, I'll work with Barney on correcting that.
Real quick, before, before we go on, we're, we're going to stop bouncing around. So, we had a suggested edit as well as an added sentence. Before we move to something else, we're going to get a general consensus from the council on if they agree with that suggested edit and that added sentence and if we're going to agree to put it in or, or not put it in. So, um, you know, we can either roll call, we didn't really have a discussion about it, so I just want to get a general consensus on if that's a needed edit, if the council agrees with it. Councilmember DeMoto, do you mind just repeating the sentence that you spoke?
In what line it goes?
I can, and this may be a good time to hand out, I have, I have my comment matrix and it's in this, but I can just read it out again, let me find it.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Twenty-nine sixty-two.
Yeah, twenty-nine sixty-two.
Okay, so the extra sentence is, "Especially in the downtown business zone," comma, "pedestrian accessibility and safety," comma, "traffic roadway safety," comma, "and hazards posed by existing parking spaces along the narrow roadway must be addressed." Period. So, it's really giving some focus to the downtown zone and the issues there, not just the broad issues on eight oh eight. So, I think it brings some attention to those specific issues.
Are you going to hand those?
And I, I can give this to you, yeah.
Good, yeah.
I won't just ask the council, I'll ask the planning commission, you guys put more work into this than anybody. Thoughts on that addition?
No, no opposition.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's needed.
Do we have a consensus of the council, a simple yes or no is sufficient?
Yes. Yes.
As of now, yes. Well, without seeing the actual
No, that's fine, again.
How it plays into
I'm not going to have the planning commission and, and town staff go through making a bunch of changes if we don't have a consensus sitting at this table now about
I'm good with adding, adding it as, and looking at it later for continuity.
I'd be fine with it as well.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Councilmember DeMoto.
And I have more on this section as well. So, if you want to keep going. Well, this is, I'm the liaison for this chapter, so
Yeah.
Well, what's in here, is that all of your comments?
Yeah, so this might be a good time for me to just pass this out
That's what I'm
And then it'll be easy for you to follow along with my comments, all right?
Is, is that okay, Tim?
Yeah, um, I mean, we're at eight-thirty now, we still have to get to another one, I mean, yeah, it's fine, but we'll just
No, I'm good, Council President, just if during the next meeting, I kind of have a lot of comments too, so I'll be willing to do the matrix too type deal and, you know, some of them's basic, some of them's just so everybody can see it and read it and understand it, so.
That's fine, and I'm still hoping we're going to have time to go back to
Yeah.
Some of your corrections and stuff.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, I can start now and stop later, so no, no problem. I just don't want to, you know
If we can knock out a complete chapter in chapter six, uh, it would be good.
I know that
We know we're going back to four.
Can we get copies as well?
Well, Steve's handing it out, um, Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I'm kind of in agreement with Carl. I don't have any immediate concerns about the sentence that was being added, but I would like to see it in context and, and think about it a little bit, so maybe if we continue a workshop, you know, I'd want to just see it in print, so. I don't think, did you have a comment?
No, I was just, if we add stuff at this meeting, the next meeting, I'm presuming we're going to get an edited version of that. Can we somehow, you know, see what, what was added so we know exactly? And then just so that I'm not going to get, it's like, his comment was basically for sidewalks and things on eight oh eight, but it might be better in a different location in the thing, like, I'm just pulling something up like page one twenty-two, it says, "Townwide pedestrian path, pathways," so that's something that we might, you know, might not fit on just, if it's more of a townwide statement, it might be better there than somewhere else. So, I'm not opposed to it, but I just don't want to finalize
Yeah.
The exact location right now.
No, no, we don't have to. I think what we can do is we can agree that the wording needs to be in the master plan
Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah.
We put it in in red or a different text color and then we take the time from now until the next workshop to
Yeah.
Kind of fine tune it.
Yeah, I'm fine, cool, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, shall I continue?
Sure.
Okay. So, uh, next, next comment is, I'm, I'm getting either, page one fourteen, line thirty-fifty-two.
What page is that on your matrix?
Oh, page twelve, sorry.
That's one of it.
Yeah, go to page twelve, everyone. It's my comment number forty-three. So, if you look at line thirty-fifty-two, the statement in here in the plan, it says, "A comprehensive long-term road system improvement plan is much needed. The aforementioned twenty-seven corridor study is outdated and any road system improvement plan will require a more contemporary study, which considers the region's growth." Okay? So, hold that thought and then go to page one eighteen. Page one eighteen, line thirty-one thirty-three to thirty-one thirty-nine. And there's some language in there that says, "With the limited data available, a complete picture of the existing traffic conditions in the town is not obtainable. It's recommended these studies be completed. The town invests in the development of a model of the town's transportation network. Corridor analysis of twenty-seven from north of I seventy to La Sire Road should also be performed." My point of highlighting these is, these, these are important studies, it seems, and models to be developed, and since transportation is a key, what I would call rate-limiting step for any future development, shouldn't these be actions that we take? Shouldn't these be under some objective somewhere under the transportation chapter? I'm not sure if they're there. These seem like pretty important things to fund, see what I'm saying? And so I'm suggesting that we itemize these as things we're going to do. Because we say in the text, "It's recommended these studies be completed and the town invests in the development of a model." So, if we mean that, then when are we going to do those things? See my point?
Right, so if I could comment, so let me, uh, so every objective has to have a subject matter expert that's a reasonable focus individual within the town, and so without throwing Barney under the bus here, um, so I would defer to, you know, Barney's comment with regard to making those, you know, objectives and achieving a model and so on and so forth. So, Barney, are those reasonable? Would it be reasonable for us to craft together an objective with tasks?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, again, the corridor study was done because, um, we never had a corridor study. It, it's not something that we do on a regular basis. We did it one time to get a consensus, knowing that these big developments we're looking at, Beck and Harrison Legere, uh, along that corridor, uh, were coming in and, um, we, um, didn't have a good, you know, one study that would show, you know, what a lot of those things are. Whether those numbers change slightly, um, I don't think there's been great change in, in that corridor study. I think that'll apply for another ten years, um, that, at the rate that things develop in this town and, and around us. You add like, you know, a growth factor of, you know, a few percent, you know, what's coming into town, uh, you know, as things develop, maybe more coming from the Frederick County side as, as, as fast as that's developing. But, um, as far as the corridor study goes, you know, it was more of a one-time thing to get, get us a picture of, hey, if, if one of these are coming in, like the Beck, which the plan did come in, it gave us a good perspective of, of what things we should be looking for. Whether we have exact numbers, um, you know, every three years or something like that, I don't know that, that's completely necessary, but, um, so
We've been on the same treadmill line for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah, so it, it's good that we did it one time. You know, whether we need, you know, to spend hundreds of thousands, we did spend over a hundred thousand on that plan. So, it, it could eat up your money fast and, and what does it gain you is something that you want to consider.
So, I think, Council President, so I think what is being proposed for, um, for agreement here is that in response to the text on page one eighteen, lines thirty-one thirty-eight, thirty-one thirty-nine, that speak of studies that need to be completed and the development, studies being specifically the Route twenty-seven corridor study.
Yeah, if I can add one thing, in the two thousand thirteen plan, um, we did say develop this, um, you know, uh, much-needed improvement or this much-needed, um, comprehensive study. That was referring to that plan that came in two thousand sixteen. It wasn't finished yet, so it was, it was referring, let's do this one time, uh, but it didn't necessarily mean, let's continue doing it.
So
So, as a clarification.
Or should we take this out, is that what you're suggesting?
I, I think it's up to you all whether you think it's needed or not. From a staff perspective, um, you know
So, there's, so there's two tasks as I read it here, and that is another corridor study, a more contemporary one from April two thousand sixteen, and secondly, the development of a town-wide transportation model. So, I think what you're saying is the current study will carry us into the next ten years? We don't need to do that?
I, I don't know that we need to in, in the next ten years, um, unless there's a lot of change that happens
Okay.
In town or around town.
Gotcha, Barney. And, and as to the development of a town transportation network model, um, is, is that of benefit to help guide us in the next ten years?
Absolutely, yeah, I, I think that is, um, because now you're not just looking at the twenty, twenty-seven intersections we looked at, there's, there's more that coming from other parts, not just north and south of twenty-seven.
So, um, with respect to Councilmember DeMoto, um, so what I'm hearing, again, I'm trying to organize the objective owner and sensibility of what we're going to look for that person to lead, um, I'm hearing the study is not as important as developing the transportation, the town transportation model. Would it be sufficient, and I apologize if I'm
No, no.
Getting too much into, would it be sufficient for us to pair that suggestion back to an objective that simply deals with the development of a that simply deals with the development of a town transportation model?
I think that makes sense, I guess my point is, if we're saying something is a need in the plan.
Understood.
If we don't take an action on it, then you sit here and you say, well, you said you need all this, and you're not, you're not doing anything, so.
That's fair.
If you don't think you need that other study, then you shouldn't talk about it in the plan.
And will it?
You see what I'm saying?
Gotcha, so we'll, we'll address that emphasis on need on the study end, and we will definitely evolve the town transportation model to an objective action.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good, okay.
I'm sorry, that's, that's what's being suggested.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Commissioners, any, any comment on, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
Is everybody on the council okay with those changes as well? For the removal of the one section and?
Yes.
Okay, you ready for another comment?
And let me clarify that real quick. So, so what you're gonna do is go to the back where the objectives are and actually add a new objective with, with the model.
For, focus just on the creation of a town transportation model. I will create that, and then I will go back to page 114, where the emphasis on the corridor study is outdated and requires a, a new one. I'll work with Barney on softening that, if you will, and addressing what is agreeably a look at, we need a new one, and I'm hearing we don't necessarily do, so.
All right, thanks.
Good comment.
Council, good with that?
I'll let, I'll kinda hold my vote on, anytime we talk about studies, particularly townwide, it's gonna add money to the budget long-term. So, I don't wanna make sure we're not, we're, I get what you're saying, so I'm not saying we don't need it or anything, I just don't wanna make sure we're agreeing to this, something in here, and then all of a sudden, like a townwide model, it's gonna cost us 500,000, or I'm pulling the numbers out, and then say, well, it's in the master plan, we gotta do it, but yet we have to find out 500,000, that may or may not provide us with the hopeful the answers we have, depending on what we're trying to gain from the study.
So, I'll, I'll kinda jump in, one, because it's in the master plan does not mean we have to do it. There's been things in the master plan for probably 30 years that have not been done. So, I don't wanna deep dive down a rabbit hole into that. We were just told by Barney that it would help the next 10 years if one were to be done, which is a decision that the council would make and how to budget their money and stuff like that. So, I'm, I'm fine based on town staff's comments that it could be in there, and if we decide that we need one, then, then we have it. Consensus of the council?
I'm okay according to the staff's recommendation.
All right, so we're good with that.
I'll agree with what Councilman Evans said.
Okay, ready for another one? Thank you, sir, may I have another?
Let's, why don't you pick your most important one?
We're getting close to public comment time.
That'll be the next one, so, go to page 120, line 3233. And this is on, this is on my matrix, page 12, my number 45. So, page 120, 3233, talks about complete streets. And there's a very, it's a, it's a two-sentence, two-sentence notation about complete streets, okay? And you kinda talk about the concepts of complete streets later on, but since you've got a header here that says "complete streets," you've given it kinda short shrift, and here is my point. If you go to the downtown vision plan, the vision plan had a lot of good information in it, and we spent $170,000 on it, never mind that fact, but in, in the downtown vision plan, they really highlight what complete streets are and how they're important and how they're valuable, and there's a lot of good language in there, and I could grab that out for you. But here's something that was important in the downtown vision plan, and I want, want you all to think about it, we wanna put this in, okay? In the downtown vision plan, it said, it said, "A recommendation that complete streets be incorporated into future development specifically," and it had a quote, "require new development near Maryland Route 27 and in other areas to design new streets to meet the complete streets principles and enhance and expand pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular networks." So, my point there is, if we're serious about complete streets and what they bring and what they're gonna bring to our developments in the future, we had a vision plan that recommended, we, we set a requirement. So, my point is, you, you could take this, this recommendation and build it into this plan, maybe it goes into one of the objectives, but that's the kinda thing you would put on a checklist or something when you're looking at pre-concept and concept plans and say, you know, are they providing the concepts for complete streets? So, I want you to think about that, I think it would be a good addition, and it was something that came out of our downtown vision plan study, that that would be important. And that specific quote, if you go to my matrix on page five, my matrix page five, my comment 16, I, I talk about the downtown vision plan, that's, that's for a different discussion. But in my number 16, the second paragraph, this is, this is the text about complete streets, how the downtown vision plan has a great overview on it, and then the specific requirement that they recommended. So, I, I would like to suggest that we latch on to that, and we put it into the master plan. Maybe it goes, maybe it just goes back under line 3233, under complete streets, and you flesh out that discussion there, and you carry some of this language, but I think you need a richer discussion about complete streets.
I'll just have a follow, I would say instead of maybe deep diving and going to it, just maybe, because it can get very long and cumbersome for the definition or use of design and getting into complete streets, that we just incorporate under complete streets the definition from Maryland State Highway or MDOT of what complete streets is supposed to be and what it incorporates. I think just by adding the state definition, it should give a better understanding of what complete streets is used to be, is supposed to be, and maybe say, kinda try and incorporate this design principle in developments moving forward where, to, to the extent applicable, because there's different aspects of complete streets depending on the volume of the streets, the volume of the traffic, and things of that nature.
Just a follow-up, I think EPA has a really good definition as well, so if you, if you're looking to grab some definition from somewhere, then, okay, fine. So, that, but the two points are, flush out the discussion of complete streets, however you wanna do it, grab a definition from somebody else, but we ought to think about, you know, the word require may be strong, but, you know, are we looking for incorporation of complete streets in our site development plans? Maybe that's something we ought to be looking at.
Just, just a note on that, complete streets is not just for new developments.
Right.
Complete streets is also existing developments and existing neighborhoods. It's going back through, so it's, you can't just kinda pigeonhole it into that.
Sure, okay.
I wanna make a comment here too. Over the years that I've, I've been involved with Town Master Plan and this process, and becoming aware of the unique characteristics of this community, and there are quite a few, there, there's a larger perspective that we have to gain, to put it together, to understand what are the factors that make a significant difference, and how do they combine, and, and how do they uniquely contribute to what our challenges are in this community? And there's some very interesting things and combinations of it, but there's a larger view of all this that we need to develop as well. And I don't, I don't know that any one study by itself, a complete streets redo and so forth, is, is necessary, but the gestalt of what we do know and what we have seen and what is unique about Mount Airy, that's what we have to grasp.
And I think clearly we're talking about four different counties in one town.
Right.
Crossing over county lines, stuff like that, yeah, I agree. Do we wanna get a consensus from the council that maybe we don't know the wording yet, but we do want to have an addition of some sort that could be discussed with the planning chair or the commission offline for the next workshop that will, will expand on the 3233 section of the master plan, is that fair?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm happy to help the chairman if he needs references.
Right, what I can do in the next version, is I can make it clear in margin comments, I can, I can gather a state definition, I can also gather the EPA definition, I can also gather the extract from the downtown vision, put them all three in there, and then that can be the, the seed corn for us to resolve.
I think that's fair.
What is best.
Okay, sorry to put more work on you.
That work?
Sorry to put more work on you.
Oh, no.
Again, I'm happy to help.
Can I make a request, since we're close to the beginning of the citizen comments in five minutes, can we take a five-minute break to use the restroom and stuff?
Sure. Real quick, just to get a quick poll, how many citizens here would like to speak regarding the master plan? Okay. I'll ask one more time, anybody, before I move on. Okay, so seeing none, is there any opposition if we're here until 9:30? Do we want to take a five-minute break and, and keep deep diving with the workshop until then?
I mean, if no citizens wants?
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the volunteers first, it's your and town staff, you guys have been working all day, so.
I'm committed to get it done.
I mean, we can probably finish out most of, of six and then even look, look into seven or kinda revert back to four, and thinking of that, and we'll start with seven on the next one.
Do you guys have anything for one or two, since they're, it's like history and introduction, anything to think about?
I have short little comments and word changes, and as I said, if we're holding another meeting, I'm fine with just starting, like doing the matrix, handing it out, and then just start going down the pages so I can just keep the flow, flow going on it, and finish up with Chapter Six at least, because I know there's a topic in here that's important to flush out, I believe.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I will say, my, my reasoning for kinda sectioning it like this is I know four through seven's gonna acquire the most amount of time.
Right.
I wanted to hammer that out first, and then we'll go back to kinda the, the lesser of the chapters. So, it is, it's 8:54, we'll take a six-minute break, and we'll just come back at nine. We'll do another half hour and see what we can get through. All right, thank you, guys. Now 25 minutes, please sit down.
I keep turning it off. It automatically turns itself back on.
Silence your phone, man. Silence the phone.
I keep trying to.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and dive back in here to, to Chapter Six involving transportation. And before, I'm sure Councilmember DeMoto, being on Streets and Roads, you probably have some more comments.
Council President, may I speak really quick?
Absolutely.
My suggestion is, if anybody has edits for wording or word changes, wordsmithing, to send that over to our Chair, Chairman, and Vice Chair, so that way we don't get into that portion and potentially get into the weeds deeper into that versus going through the wordsmithing portion of it. That's my suggestion.
Yeah, I would think if we're talking adding full sentences, et cetera, I'd probably wanna get a council
Absolutely.
overview of that, but if we're gonna change a word here or there, that's, that's probably something that we can highlight in red, and then kinda come back to that so we don't kinda dive into it. So, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
As long as the Chair and Vice Chair are okay with that process, again, that puts a lot of work on, on you guys.
We're used to it.
All right. I don't know if I like that or not.
We got, we got big rucksacks. Throw it in.
You have anything under transportation that you would like? Okay. Councilmember DeMoto, did you?
I do not have any, any major things on transportation, I, I had a little suggestion, but let me see if I can find it here.
Okay, I will say that there is one word, now that I'm gonna backtrack a little bit, that I would like changed. It's a, probably a bigger change than just one word, though, so that's why I'm gonna, if you could, go to page 122, 3300, where it says, "Traditional pedestrian signal and crosswalk technologies may not suffice." In my opinion, based on the data, I think "may" should be changed to "will," "will not suffice."
What line?
3300.
Thank you.
On page 122.
Okay, it begins on 1399.
I'm sorry, it begins at, yeah, it begins at, yeah, it begins at 3299. It actually begins way up there, 3297. I think there's enough data, especially when I pulled it for, for the back robbery to show that it will not suffice to cross Maryland State 27 with a crosswalk. I think if we say "may," it opens up for interpretation.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
I mean, if, if one person gets killed, it, it does not suffice.
Right.
So.
Too dangerous.
My, and again, that's a big word, so that's why I just wanted to throw it out there. To me, it will not suffice, so. Consensus on that, or questions or concerns?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, all right, so we can go ahead and change that, thank you.
I agree, but, yeah, whatever, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, I got some other changes, may I continue? Well, it's one of those, it's wordsmithing, like the difference between shall and will.
Well, let's go ahead, yeah, let's go ahead, we'll just, we'll send those in an email.
Yeah, it's one of those weird things, but I do have a discussion on the, basically on line 3300 regarding some wording on that, just to make sure that we correctly put the, you know, the wording in here if it did or did not happen. This is line 3300 through 3202, it indicates discussions between the town, Carroll County State Highway have taken place. Where the town has expressed a preference for an underground or tunnel, it seems like, first off, confusing. It says underground or tunnel, or is that supposed to be above ground?
Just, just so you know, I believe, so I, I crafted this section, I was asked to support the planning commission, and I can, I can find the text, I believe I took that sentence right out of the Carroll County Commissioners, it was a letter they sent. It was their, their wish list for, for projects from MDOT. And, and that was the language that was in it, so I wanted to use the exact language.
I just wanna make sure that we do have, you know, some type of written proof that this is the correct language, because it says, in this sentence, it says that, that with a preference for them, and then in the next 3310 to 3312, it indicates, in its March 2024 letter, depending on what that was, if that was the Consolidated Transportation Plan letter, MDOT and the Board of County Commissioners stated it is imperative that there is, there to be a safe means for pedestrians to cross Maryland 27 in this vicinity of Center Street. It does not indicate any preferred means, any preferred methods by the state, it just says a safe means. So, I wanna make sure that I'm not, we're not putting words into government officials that we are dependent upon to keep this issue alive with, with the state. I wanna make sure we have the text in this section accurate, is the best way to say it.
Was it two separate?
It's two.
Hang on.
Sorry, sir, sorry.
All right. Councilmember Demoter, was it two separate, uh?
It's probably in this.
Communications?
It's probably in this March twenty-twenty-four letter, which is footnoted sixteen. It's probably in that correspondence.
Okay.
So I think we go back and we look at that letter, it's, I think that the text that I put in here is from that.
Okay, all right, so we can just, we can throw it on there to check it and, uh.
Carl, is your concern that we're boxing ourselves into a tunnel option as opposed to a bridge option?
Oh, that also, and also, the bridge, tunnel, I know people don't like the fact of the at-grade crossing, but you look around there around, and also, you know, in discussions that we've had of us at, and they have not, State Highway doesn't like it, the tunnel or the bridge, directly. But I, but I also wanna say that there was an article, a news report on Channel thirteen last week. If we're gonna be pushing for a tunnel, we might be shooting ourselves in the foot, uh, because, due to some things. We should keep the options open, because there was just a report on Channel thirteen that on Route one in Howard County, much worse roads, same speed, six, six lanes, people have been killed, and the State Highway decided, and this is an area that's been targeted by the state for safe streets, complete of three intersections, they decided that the best option for this area is a fully signalized crosswalk. So I don't wanna be shooting ourselves in the foot, limiting it, so that's why I wanna make sure we have the correct term and leaving it up to all options, but indicating the wording that the town's preference is an underground or above ground.
Well, I'll, I'll correct on that. It's not the town's preference, it's Carroll County and State Highway Administration have identified the preference for an underground or tunnel. If that was said, then it's a fact. I'm not here to debate a at-grade crosswalk or not, we're talking about what's gonna be in the master plan. So what we can do is we'll verify the text, um, and we can come back with that.
Closing comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be too worried about it, Carl, because at the end of the day, engineers are gonna come in, they're gonna have to design a crossing of that highway, and frankly, if they come in and say a tunnel's not feasible, it's gonna have to be a bridge or something, then it changes regardless of what's on the master plan. So I wouldn't be too worried about it.
Okay.
Thanks, so, thank you.
All right, do we have anything else in chapter six?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify and close that, if I could, Council President.
Sure.
If, Councilmember Demoter, if you could send me a copy of that letter, I'm, I'm not, I probably have it, but just to be sure, if you have it, if you could send it to me.
I'll look for it, I'll verify the language, and I'll, uh, make a copy and we'll get it to you.
Right, and likewise, when I, when I see it, what I'll do to address Councilmember Munder's concern with line thirty-three oh-one, underground comma or tunnel, what I'll do is I'll just verify that is indeed the context and language. But right now, until we do that, I think no changes just yet, right?
Okay.
Okay.
I would agree.
Sounds good.
All right, so, chapter six, do we have anything else other than wordsmithing that can be put into red for us to review and then just hit through quickly in the next meeting? Is there anything else in chapter six?
Nothing that would not, nothing that wouldn't, that would not be a short discussion, sir, so I can wait till another time.
Well, it's, it's.
On some objective language and stuff.
Okay, so, yeah, nothing more than wordsmithing.
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, and it being non-fifteen, I don't know if it'd be smart to start something else, um, now. So we worked through all of five.
Correct.
Five is done. We are gonna revisit four, and we're just gonna send in any wordsmithing requests to the Chair and the Vice Chair, um, which we then can, which will be in different color text with options. We'll go through, we'll look at the options, and we'll just do a quick consensus of which one we wanna get, and we'll kinda get that out of the way pretty fast, and that'll complete, uh, chapter six. And then we will just need to go back to four, um, that we tabled, which was the zoning, or I'm sorry, chapter five. My mistake, my mistake. Chapter five, which was the, the zoning of Harrison Lashir and Voslo and stuff like that. So my consensus for the council would be to send in the wordsmithing for the transportation chapter that you see. They will put those in, uh, we will come to a consensus at the next meeting. And also, please come to the table regarding chapter five with your thoughts for the, the zone for Harrison Lashir, the zoning, uh, what you have for zoning for Harrison Lashir, and also the Voslo property, I think was the other one that we were looking at. South Maine, yeah.
And to be, and to be, excuse me, but to be clear, I'm only gonna make edits relative to, relative to the selected entries on your matrix that we have discussed, or do I make the edits for the full matrix offering? Just the ones we've discussed?
I would, I would assume.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fair, just the ones that we talked about, but now that we have the handout, we all have a chance to review it. It should make, uh, the next workshop go smoother, if that's your decision.
Yeah, I would think that, I mean, I know I'll be reviewing these, and I can send some in as well from this. And even if you review it and you see something that, you know, you like that goes into six, you can even throw it in yourself as well.
Right, so when we, when we make the next edits, what I'll do is I'll reference in the margin comments the specific item number that that edit in chapter six is addressing. So you know, out of the matrix, which ones, um, am I addressing?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, within, with Councilmember Demoter being our Streets and Roads liaison, I mean, it's, it is a good, good packet here, so.
Okay.
I'm sure there's some good information in it. So with that being said, we, we move on to next steps. Um, we had a next step of, of a hopeful introduction in November, of public hearing in December, and then, and then a potential adoption in December. I don't believe that's gonna happen, so what I'm gonna do is I will roll call, um, with, actually, before I do that, I wanna defer to the planning commission. Do you feel it would be important to have another workshop as a consensus from the PC?
Any, any feelings?
Well, let, well, let me discuss it. I just wanted to make one suggestion, and that would be that, um, with these edits, that we don't do a complete reprint of the whole book, we're just reprinting the specific.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we can just reprint, we can just reprint these specific pages that the edits are on, almost create a packet like this, and we'll just go through once we get to that point.
Sounds good. Like the code books, in other words.
I mean, maybe at most one more workshop.
Okay.
Just to, and come with notes and plans.
I would say let's shoot for that and see if that accomplishes it.
Okay.
I think we're close.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I do, too.
As I said, I just got some comments to go over some of the finer points that I've picked out, that I just have some questions or concerns over in it. Like, as someone said, refining and rounding the edges off of it, basically, that's all my comments.
I'm, I'm, I echo the sentiment, um, just, just kind of as an overview, you know, chapter four is what we're gonna do within our current boundaries. It's rezonings of current properties, it's redevelopment of, of underperforming properties, it's, it's of that ilk. Chapter five is municipal growth. It speaks to getting bigger.
Yeah.
And what do we do and how is that to be done? So municipal growth is very much a very important part of the overall document, so time for that is all good.
Yeah. All right, so I would, I would make a recommendation to the council that we do plan another workshop that will go through the wordsmithing edits, um, rather quickly, uh, and then we will dive back into chapter five, but I, I would come to the table prepared with what you would like to see in those properties, uh, your reasons why, and then, and then we can kinda bounce those ideas back and forth. Do we have a consensus to do another workshop?
Yeah, I believe one's needed, yes, sir.
Yes, I, I, I would like to ask, I, I believe there needs to be some work on, I guess it's chapter one, I mean, the vision statement and the top-level strategic objectives. We really need, because the words matter, that, that drives the whole strategy of the plan. So I wanna make sure we have enough time that we have a conversation about that.
Yeah, no, we, we absolutely will. Again, my reasoning for doing four through seven first was just the context is gonna be so great. But, but I agree, every chapter will get its opportunity to be, to be touched upon. It's just a matter of getting the bulk of it done first. So with that being said, what we'll do is we will set a, another workshop date during the November meeting. You probably, all of you, will get a email with a certain amount of dates on it. If possible, I'd like to have the date set before the council meeting, just so that we're aware, um, so please look for that. And with that being said, that, that will be our next step. We will have another workshop. I don't think it'll be here. We should probably look to maybe just do that at Town Hall, uh, based on attendance tonight, um, so we can do that. Other than that, I wanna thank everybody for coming. I wanna thank the council, the planning commission, and obviously town staff for all their work, and I'm looking forward to the next one, probably somewhere around mid-November-ish, I would assume. But you'll get some dates tomorrow or, or, uh, on Friday. All right? All right, with that, this meeting is now closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.